Seven oh five, I'm going to call the, call to, the meeting called to order. Starting at seven oh five, the agenda is in front of you. And we're gonna start, so item one, and item one point one, the introduction. This particular month, as you can see from the agenda, there's a little bit more to the introduction, so we've actually started in the election announcement here for the ATC election for 2021. The dates that's been selected currently on November, Tuesday, November the second, and Saturday, November the fifth, which coincides with what would have been a national election, which we did vote on earlier this year. The actual times and locations will come to pass as it gets closer to the date. In the meantime, I've got two announcements that the, 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 we have an election chair and a co-chair. The election chair has, is been accepted and nominated by Chris O'Malley, who is gonna be the election chair, and the co-chair is Hannah Petrie for the election of 2021. So after this, this moment, we'll be passing everything over to them, and any support they need, feel free to help them wherever you can. So that's, that's the election chair, and they will have a report for us next month, and any questions, please contact them. Now, you should have all received the election rules, the updated election rules, there's basically not too much change other than the dates, and a couple little things like that. Yeah, I'd like to put that to a vote right now for us to accept the new election rules as were sent to you, and then, once that's been accepted and voted, then we can post that to our website, and people can get the information from there.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Billy, it's Victoria. Do we need to call roll before we do this?
Oh. It was, it's on, it's listed on the agenda under introduction, so. You know what, that's, that, I think to follow protocol, I think you should be right, because then we actually have the names for the minutes. So let's do roll call, so I'm gonna go back to this, so I'm gonna cut to item one point two. Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilmember Knapp, to Dorothy to do roll call, and then we'll come back to the, uh, to the vote. So, uh, item one point two, Dorothy, Councilmember Wong, for the roll call.
All right, good evening, councilmembers, let's do the roll call. Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Amy Lyford.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Nick Aronson.
Present.
I'm here, Dorothy. Hannah Petrie.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Sandra Thomas.
She's here, she's on you.
She's here.
Okay, thank you. Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Veronica Jones.
Here.
Daryl Aranda.
Hello.
Hi. Madeline Barber.
Here.
Alan Peck. Missing Alan, right?
Yeah, so far.
Okay.
Yeah, I just sent him a text.
We heard he might be late, so just bear that in mind if we see him.
Okay, Reginald Wilkins.
Here, howdy.
Hi, Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Thank you, Sylvan Vega.
Here.
And Diane Markison.
Here.
So that is fifteen present, so we have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wong. I think what I'm also gonna do, just to make it, uh, also cemented in validity, is I move on to the ex, next item, which is one point three, to prove, uh, approve the, the meeting agenda for this meeting, so that anything is done in this meeting has approval prior to doing so. So I will move to the next item, which is one point three, the approval of, uh, August seventeenth of Councilmember Jones, and then we'll do the vote after that.
Good evening, councilmembers. We all received the agenda, and are there any additions or corrections to the agenda other than moving the election down? Okay, hearing no additions or corrections, I make a motion that we accept the August seventeenth agenda as received.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So moved, unanimous. Um, and then, uh, Councilmember Jones, we're gonna go back to the vote, so would that actually become item one point four, or would that remain item one point one two?
Now, ask me again, what, what did you just say?
We're gonna be doing the election, uh, vote on the election rules right now. Should that actually, and maybe the polit, parliamentarian should answer that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Thomas, would that become item one point three, uh, one point four? Or would that remain where it is right now, one point one two?
Uh, no. I think we should ma, make it one point four.
Right, okay. All right, so item one point four, the, uh, vote for the election rules, as previously mentioned. We did have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
He had a second.
I think we already had a second, does anybody remember who seconded that motion?
Why, it was Daryl. Daryl seconded it.
All right. So all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So moved, unanimous. Thank you very much. So now I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is item two, officers' report, and we're gonna start with the chairman's report, which is, uh, my report, and, um, I will, I have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. The, the first one is, uh, many of us have been asking about when we go back to live meetings, and, um, I, as, as you may or may not have known, the county had planned on opening up facilities, um, in September. So there was a chance we could have gone back to a live meeting starting September. But with the, uh, Del, new Delta variants and, uh, and other things happening, um, now, that opening of, uh, county facilities has now been, um, put on hold and extended until we know what's happening with the new variants. So as soon as we have that, uh, I'll give you an update, and hopefully it won't be too much longer. Okay, so the next item is, I also want to amount, announce that, uh, Chris O'Malley has also been nominated by the ATC Executive Committee to sit, uh, on and represent ATC on the Altadena Libraries Community Focus Group as they spoke, approached, uh, decisions around the design, options, priorities, and community needs within the passing of Measure Z. Um, and then I also want to announce that, um, and this is in reference to PUSD, Catherine Bagger's office, um, with LA County requested the ATC to put forward two names for Altadena as recommendations for, uh, the PUSD Committee of, uh, for redistricting. Those names that we, that we were able to put forward from the community are Nora Smalls and Brent Nicely. So I'd like to congratulate them on being the, uh, their names being, um, put forward and, uh, accepted by the LA County. All right, so, thank you very much, I think that's it. I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is two point two, with a vice chair report from Councilmember Jones.
Good evening again, I just wanna report, I just wanna say to everybody how important it is that we get the word out about the election. I want you to encourage all your neighbors and your, everybody in your census tract to vote, and even run for office. This, the town count, the, count, town council is important, what we do is important for the health of our community, and I think we do make a difference. So I think it's important that we engage our community, and it sometimes falls on our shoulders to engage them. So I really would just like everyone to make an extra effort to get people out to vote and to get people interested in our 2021 election. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jones. Moving on, item two point three, recording secretary. Uh, temporary, uh, or interim secretary, recording secretary, Councilmember Markison.
Uh, yes, I sent the, sorry, I'm looking at the agenda. Um, I sent the minutes out, uh, for June a few days ago, so I guess we need to do these one at a time. Did anybody, I did not receive any comments or questions on either month of meeting minutes. Did anybody? Okay. Um, can I put both of them in the same motion, both months? I think so, yeah. Okay. Um, I'd like to, I, I'm gonna make a motion that, um, the June twenty twenty one and July twenty twenty one minutes as distributed will be approved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Absention.
One abstention, Councilmember Vega. Okay, uh, thank you very much, I'm gonna, uh, move on, item two point four, treasures report, um, Councilmember Markison.
Yes, I'm very sorry, I was unable to get the, uh, bank statement, um, for tonight, but I can tell you that whatever the balance was last time, we, we had a debit for nine dollars ninety-nine cents for the website, we didn't make any deposits, and I didn't write any checks.
Okay, thank you, moving on, item two point five, corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong.
I thank you, councilmembers and chairman. Uh, so, uh, we have really, uh, had a lot of events as we've been sort of, uh, coming back to whatever world of normals we're in. So I've been working on the, uh, calendar, um, community calendar page of the website. So just, uh, some highlights, because they're coming fast and furious, um, so obviously we're at the town council meeting. We'll hopefully hear a little bit more on August tenth was the last day of the Devil's Gate, um, dam excavation phase of that project. Uh, the Altadena Farmers Market is looking for, obviously, they've been, um, growing more vendors, more performance music, um, so they are happening, Altadena Farmers Market every Wednesday from four to seven, and still is doing online ordering. Let's see, then we've got, uh, some events going on, I think Veronica's gonna be covering um, an event regarding a mixed-use development on eight twenty-one. Rotary Club, uh, concerts in the park are still going on Saturdays, seven PM. Uh, we'll also be doing a community, um, engagement event, peace in the park at Charles White Park Walk and Roll. Also Saturday morning, that includes a free breakfast. Uh, the library's got lots of exciting stuff, but Chris will be keeping up to date, uh, with that stuff as well. Victor, Nikki tonight, uh, we're gonna be having a, a bite back Altadena San Gabriel Valley mosquito virtual event on August twenty-sixth. I'm sure I've missed something, but we have some amazing residents who are hosting volleyball on the same evening, so there'll be lots of music, August twenty-eighth. Also, the Lincoln Avenue, I have to put this in here, but the Lincoln Avenue Water Company is having their board meeting where, um, just, I think today, the Metropolitan Water District announced stage two, um, drought alert, so that will be, um, on the agenda for our water companies, and Lincoln Avenue Water, August twentieth at ten AM, will be their meeting. Um, also, I will be posting, um, a blog site. Uh, LA County is going through their, um, sustainability draft plan feedback sessions, um, and they're doing, um, group sort of, uh, Microsoft Teams interventions, but you can also do a personal interview, uh, and that will be finishing up, I think, at the end of this month, the thirty-first. We also have, uh, LA County Park, Parks Needs Assessment. Um, and so I think I need to put that meeting on there, eight twenty-five will be the West End Gabriel Valley Parks Needs Assessment meeting, and you can also do that online, and then the county housing element is also looking for feedback. So housing, sustainability, and parks. Okay, I'm tired now. That is August, and then we're, um, starting to populate September when we get around to that, so if you have any events, uh, definitely, uh, let me know, or I will find them as we grow our communications committee. Uh, we'll also be hearing more great information. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, um, thank you, Councilmember Wong. I also just wanna make sure, I point out, um, just to make sure it's on the record, is that Councilmember Markison had stepped in to take some of the duties of the recording secretary after Nick Santangelo, uh, left the council. And the reason why is because our bylaws state that you have to sit on the council for one year before you can sit on executive committee. Um, and the, and with so many new members, there was only a couple people left that had the option to come onto executive committee, and, uh, they were both so, uh, extremely busy and couldn't take that up. So, uh, please consider it, now that you've been on for a year, that when the elections come up, um, you can consider, you know, or whatever the, uh, no, say committee decides, speak with them and where your interests are, but I just wanna make sure that everybody was aware of why Councilmember Markison is wearing two hats right now. And that it wasn't, there wasn't a replacement, there just wasn't a choice at that time. Okay, moving on, item three, public safety reports, item three point one, California Highway Patrol is, uh, Officer Keller here, yeah, if not, we'll come back to him, he did say he was gonna be a little late. Yeah, I don't see him here, so I'm gonna move on to item three.
Oh, oh, my, my name is Jonathan, wait, I'm, uh, spinning in briefly for Officer Keller.
Okay, would you, okay, would you like to, uh, to, uh, lead, lead the report?
He, he, he mentioned, he mentioned he, uh, he would be shortly, he was running a little bit behind, and he has, um, some updates, uh, for you guys.
Would you like us to wait and come back to this? We can move it down the agenda a little bit until he says so.
Yes, please, and like I said, I'll fill him in on what's been discussed, uh, so far.
Absolutely, not a problem. And then if we do move on to another item, I will, we'll just come back to him when he, when he's available.
Sounds good.
All right, so moving on, item four point two, uh, no, three point two, the Altadena Sheriff's Station with, uh, Lieutenant Skaggs. I did see him here earlier.
You're on mute, Lieutenant.
That didn't help, how's that? Is that better?
There we are.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I turned the video on, but then turned mute off. Okay, so, uh, honestly, this past July was the first time, I think, since I've been here, that I'd have to say we actually had a small percentage increase in crime, at least compared to the same period, period last year, very small. But we are comparing, you know, last year's in the middle of a COVID lockdown to somewhat more normal times, and the, the increase is only like two percent, and a lot of that was attributable to series of burglaries that we had, um, kind of all other, kind of all over. The good thing is though, we did make some arrests in these burglaries, um, and we're pretty sure that, uh, they're all responsible for multiple burglaries. Um, one of them was the, uh, a man named Edward Mendez, and he is the same individual who, uh, likely started that fire, uh, about a month or so ago up at Zorthean Ranch, that transient who lived up there. He was burglarizing, we caught him burglarizing some of the cabins up there at the, uh, the campground, and he's, or think he's probably responsible for, some of the other thefts and burglaries that have kind of occurred up in that sort of northern part of the, the area up there. He's, uh, I just checked today, he's still in custody, he goes to court, um, I believe on the thirtieth. We also arrested a, a man, uh, who was living down in the Arroyo, sort of by JPL. Uh, he was responsible for at least two burglaries over on that side of town. Uh, he was, believe it or not, he was coming up and breaking in, using their swimming pool and making food and doing all kinds of stuff. When they caught him, he was actually wearing a shirt that was taken in a prior burglary from the same house. So he's still in custody as well, and then, um, uh, another transient, um, was responsible probably for two burglaries on the same house, and he's, was arrested and is still in custody as well. And all of them are, they're all transients, all have long histories of being arrested, uh, histories of drug use, several burglaries each. Well, they were staying, we're not rolling around, but at least temporarily, we've got them off the, the streets, and then on top of it, we had a series of commercial burglaries down, um, like Woodbury and Lincoln and Woodbury and, and Fair Oaks, uh, the U-Haul, and then the mobile station down there, and we were able to, uh, definitively track that all to, uh, some kids from Hathways, Sycamores. We got video on them, and it turned out to be, I don't know, I have a big matrix here, there was probably twenty five different kids with a lot of, uh, carryover into who was involved. The problem being, of course, being juveniles, um, we were just basically taking them home and nothing was happening to them. So our detectives coordinated with the probation department, as well as the district attorney's office, and, um, we've now got at least five of them being held by probation for these crimes, as well as some other stuff that they were involved in, and this will help, the supervisors over at Hathways get them out of there, they have to go through a process, but it's part of the process, and the biggest problem, of course, is the, these kids were basically committing felonies, and there was absolutely no consequences, they were just being taken home, they still had their cell phones and all that kind of stuff because of the rules of Sycamore or Hathways, and, uh, at least this way, there has been some consequence, and we rest, this has took two, couple of weeks for us to get these kids in custody, and since then, um, there hasn't been any of these other crimes down there, so we're hoping that that gets put to rest a little bit, and next month, we should see, uh, some improvement on that front. But other than that, it's still, uh, overall crime rate in, in Altadena is still really good, our biggest issue is just, you know, in addition to these burglaries, has been, you know, thefts from vehicles and that sort of thing, so I'm actually overall pretty happy with it. Oh, um, Mr. Peck isn't here, right? He's not here yet? No, okay, uh, maybe some of you I know are, um, the meat shop, it opened up again down there, um, on Woodbury and, uh, Fair Oaks, or I'm sorry, yeah. It was near a preschool, I don't know if it's just north of Montana in that general area. I think it's in more way, Montana, anyway, uh, just, I did let our narco unit know about it, and hopefully we can get something done to make them close back up, but until we get some political will to prosecute these offenders, they're just gonna pop right back up.
Lieutenant Skaggs, if I could ask you, I, I call counsel with Alan Peck for, for the census tract forty-six eleven. We also noticed while we were canvassing that, um, a lot of the neighbors are really concerned about the, uh, drug trafficking in the areas, mostly.
Yeah, overall, like on Raymond, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I actually briefed my deputies today and yesterday personally on that one, uh, and I told them to go down there and make themselves a general nuisance and see if they can make that go away, because, yeah, we don't need that, that open street drug dealing. That was on, on, like, uh, I think Raymond, just north of Montana, roughly, in that area there.
It's actually, it's actu, it's actually Woodbury and Raymond.
Okay.
And it's, it's across the street from, uh, from the liquor store.
Liquor store.
But Woodbury, Raymond, kind of like the south, uh, the southeast corner. Yeah.
No, no, I'll, I'll definitely have them do some patrolling over there.
Perfect, thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Okay, uh, Councilmember Jones, and again, Councilmember Knapp after.
Yeah, I just wanna tell, uh, Lieutenant Skaggs, and I wanted it to go on record, thank you for helping clean up those, uh, RVs and, um, um, eighteen-wheelers parked on Woodbury. It, it's, today the kids went to school and there was not one single one.
Yeah, you know, so I drove over there, uh, two days ago, uh, actually yesterday afternoon, and it's funny, all the RVs had moved down south again on, uh, it's a Canyota that's over there behind the high school, and they were all right south in Pasadena's area again, so we just pushed them down there, my guess is they'll hit them and they'll push them back in our area, but.
What they do is at nighttime, they come back to Altadena, but I think parking enforcement has been out.
Yeah.
And CHP, but thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Knapp?
I see that Officer Keller is here too, um, but I wanted to, again, on the record, address, um, Lieutenant Skaggs and Officer Keller. I put a plea out that we get, uh, patrol help at Altadena Arts Magnet. The school has more than doubled in size since we last were in school, uh, prior to COVID, and we are having a horrible traffic nightmare, um, at the corner of El Molino and Calaveras. So I just wanted to thank both of you for being responsive. I also wanted to say that we have county coming out tomorrow morning at seven fifteen in the morning to witness, um, drop-off, so that we can assess moving the crossing guard. But if you've ever tried to deal with a crossing guard issue, it takes a act of Congress, evidently, to move or reassign or add, uh, crossing guards. So we have a real problem with just residents rolling and blowing completely through the stop sign, that, it's a four-way stop with clearly demarcated crosswalks that we actually had county paint right before the pandemic. Um, and there will be mothers with their kids in a stroller, and they just go completely through that intersection without, I mean, today, I got so many texts today from parents with near misses, so anytime you could swing by the school, either seven-thirty-ish in the morning or two-fifteen-ish in the afternoon, we definitely appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, anyone else? Um, i- it may have already been addressed, but I just wanted to add, uh, I think Councilmember Jones was talking about it with the RVs and the eighteen-wheelers, um, on Woodbury, is that also Woodbury that goes around and includes Fair Oaks by the, uh, Mountain View Cemetery, because every time I go up Fair Oaks, as the other day, there was like six or seven eighteen-wheelers and flatbeds with cars on it, um, and none of them, those eighteen-wheelers have reason to even be in Altadena, so obviously they're, they're parking and sleeping on. And in one case, when I saw the flatbed full of cars, it looked like they actually had one of the cars off and was negotiating, uh, price for it, or something was go, you know, deal was going down, so I don't know if that's being addressed, because we do have the large, uh, vehicle ordinance, but it does impact um, parking for the business across the street, for the pub, it, it is, uh, distracting for the, uh, for the businesses right there, which is the, uh, cemetery. Uh, I just wanted to know if that's been addressed, I, I don't know, so I'm, I'm sorry if it already has.
Uh, these, as far as we're concerned, it's something I know we've had to look into before, I didn't realize it was a problem again. I'll, I'm gonna have a look, no, not a, not a, not a problem, that's what we're here for.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wong.
We have to report it.
Hi, uh, Lieutenant Skaggs, uh, so, um, the transient, um, activity that was happening, are they, do you know if they are, um, living in the canyon, or do you think they're just coming up?
Yeah, so, uh, the one that, the, the two burglaries down there on Altadena Drive, you know, up, right there near the Arroyo, that, he was absolutely living down in the Arroyo. He, believe it or not, he was living down there with his mom and his, his, his boyfriend, apparently, that's what the deputies told me. So I am, and then, of course, the Mendez, the guy who did the, the fire up there, I, I can only assume he was living back up there behind Zorthean Ranch somewhere, and he come out in the hills, I really don't know. It kind of lines up with him then burgying the, the cabins over there, but the campground, so it kind of all makes sense. And as far as the other, the other guy that we arrested, I don't know, he's a transit, I will say this, of those three, there was actually four arrests, one guy was a neighbor, so I didn't include him in this, but, um, of these three, that these, they're, we're doing the multiple burglaries, the first two aren't even locals. The Mendez, he's a prior East LA resident, and Martinez, the one that was down the Arroyo, he's got a Long Beach address, or previously had a Long Beach address. Uh, the other guy, Schiffer, he's, um, he was a Pasadena resident, he kind of stayed local, but how these other two got here is, is kind of a, kind of a mystery, and, uh, I really wish I knew, because they need to go back where they came from, we don't need to have, you know, import somebody else's problem.
Uh, yeah, thanks, and then I know that, uh, you guys have been closing the gate at Chaney a little more diligently.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I think I took care of that, I, I did, I did alter our policy a little bit, and there has to be some calls typed in and things like that, but, uh, even if we can't go up, I've told them I want the call typed in with an explanation of why we're not doing it right now. Okay, so, so there's a record on, there's a record of why.
Okay, and then, uh, I sent kind of a group email around that hopefully we can even, because at the end of the day, there's only one sign that says the gate closes at eight o'clock, and it's.
Yeah, the one right there at the gate.
Yeah, and then otherwise, if you're at the top, there's no signs, so people are, you know, going up there to.
I saw that email, and I, I don't have a clue how the. I saw that email and I, I don't have a clue how the signs are being posted. Who's responsible? Is it Public Works or is it Forestry? I don't know. It might be a combination of the two. Might be a good idea though.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any, any more questions from the council? All right. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Skaggs. I really appreciate you coming again and we'll see you next month. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I'm actually gonna go back one to item three point one. California Highway Patrol, cause I do see Officer Keller in the room.
Hello, good evening. Sorry for my tardiness. I was stuck at a soccer practice. For this, uh, for last month, uh, traffic report, we had eighteen traffic collisions in the Altadena Incorporated area that we cover. Four with injuries, total of six injured parties. Um, there were three hit runs and this, or last month, there were no vehicle versus pedestrians in the area where we cover. So it's better than last month with the two bicyclists. Couple of things I wanna point out, uh, National Night Out, it was successful. Fortunately, myself and Officer Boyd were at the Burbank National Night Out. And Captain Moulton and Vincent Ramirez got to go to yours. Hopefully next year I can be in Altadena, a lot closer. Like to bring up, uh, with the schools starting, I know Altadena started this week. We're, we're diligently making an effort to increase patrols in the school zones. There's a little mix-up in the schools, the timings, of course, drop off and starts and ends, but we'll get that all shaken out this month. We'll be visiting schools, talking to principals and addressing any and all concerns. Veronica, Ms. Jones, uh, thank you for, uh, bringing attention, the parking issue on Woodbury. Um, that area is actually three different jurisdictions. The Woodbury side is gonna be Altadena, the east side of Canyota is Pasadena. And the west side is kind of Highway Patrol. The people parking there, the trucks and transients, they know the game. Um, they're allowed seventy-two hours. Pasadena's gone out and put temporary no parkings there, uh, the last couple of weeks. And that's when they all shoot out and went to Woodbury, knowing they couldn't be touched until their time ran out. So we're, we're working on getting those vehicles, the big rigs and the, especially those camping trailers. They leave behind so much trash. We have Caltrans yard right there and they pick it up daily. But even they can't keep up with all of that. Other than that, let everyone know, uh, parents, friends, school zones. We are gonna be enforcing all vehicle codes, whether it be the U-turns, the left turns, crosswalks, jaywalking. Um, anything unsafe, we will be out there. COVID is over. Everyone needs to follow the rules and there's not one, but there's two of us running around now, so. Safety first. Let's get those kids safe and sound to school, in and out. And that's about all I have for this month, unless you have any questions.
Okay, before I go to questions, I just wanted to point out is that in Altadena and Incorporated Altadena, in this particular town itself, we do have a large vehicle audit ordinance. There is no seventy-two hour allowance. If it's a large vehicle, we've had, uh, several residents, I think maybe even council members who's got, who've gotten ticket for their RV simply because they put out their driveway while they were cleaning the driveway. To get for being on the street.
They need a permit, I think, first, too. I think they can park three days a month or something overnight with their large vehicle, but they need a permit.
Oh, that's correct. Yes, yes, yes. We're, we're a little bit new to this, uh, every area has different rules. I did hear that one. I knew it was.
Yeah, well, you guys don't do our parking for us, so.
Correct. We're, we're more traffic than anything.
We have our own parking enforcement. All right, any questions from the council? Councilmember Wong?
Uh, hi, Officer Keller. So I, I'm sure I can email you, but, um, if there's any way to get the speed trailer that's sitting on Altadena Drive right now to, um, you know, our parks. So for example, Loma Alta has forty mile an hour arguably cars that are going past there. And then Charles White Park, um, you know, at Glen Rose and Ventura. Ventura, the speed limit's thirty-five. But effectively, it's going right past the park. And, uh, both of those streets, Ventura and Loma Alta, don't have sidewalks or real connective sidewalks. So whatever we can do, you know.
No, that's perfect. Because I've not, I don't know the area, every street, every road. If you could send me an email with locations, specific locations that you notice problems, that would help me immensely. And I can get that trailer moved, you know, I can do weekly stints and leave it there, then do some enforcement, then move it to the next spot. You're seeing problems. Please send me an email with those locations and I'll be more than happy if the trailer's there.
Appreciate you. Thank, thank you.
No problem.
Um, in, in the same vein, which I don't think it's CHP, I think that would be, uh, um, the sheriff's station. Um, I know oftentimes they'll leave a decoy car. I was just thinking about what, uh, Councilmember Nap was saying about the school. That if we had a decoy car out there parked during the times that was going on, what was visible by people driving through, that might also help to mitigate some of the issues of people blasting the signs and stuff like that.
Yes, uh, we don't have any decoy cars, but we just had our senior volunteer meeting today and they are, they've done their driving tests and research. So we have senior volunteers that will be patrolling the school area, being a visual presence. So you will see those guys, they'll be wearing the white shirts, they'll be in a fully marked patrol car. They won't be able to do any enforcement, but the visual presence helps immensely. We're gonna try to get a system of rotating around the schools. We have fifteen to twenty schools in Altadena, and that's not including Lock Center and down in, uh, Chapman Woods area. But we will be getting a system, you will be seeing us. And like I said, please email me any areas of concern that will give me a, uh, pinpoint area to focus on.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Any, any, um, any questions from the council before we move on? Uh, Councilmember Wilkins? You're muted.
Okay, have we had this volunteer program before? I hadn't heard of it. Sounds like an interesting program.
Yes, the senior volunteer problem, it, it's been going on for, I think, over fifteen years now. They were not allowed to continue their meetings during COVID. Um, we just got them back. Was it in June? We had our first official senior volunteer meeting. Their numbers are low. We have about ten for the office right now. Um, but they're gonna be doing a big push to get the word out, to have people apply for uh, the, the senior volunteer program. So you'll be seen in the newspaper, then we'll try to get ads out.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Any more questions? Otherwise, we're moving on. All right. Thank you so much, Officer Keller. I appreciate you taking the time to come visit us and, uh, and we're hopeful we'll see you next month.
My pleasure. Apologize for being late.
No problem at all. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The last, the safety report, which is three point three, uh, Altadena Fire or Valley County Fire with Maria Graykin.
Good evening. Okay, I have the stats for July. And, uh, for the month of July, there were a total of three hundred and twenty-four responses. Two hundred and fifty-three medical calls with two hundred and thirteen patients transported. Uh, we did have, um, three fires. One was a trash fire and, which was a dumpster. And, uh, another one on July fifth was arcing wires on Highland Avenue caught, um, a tree and a fence in a backyard on fire. And then we had a cooking fire on the twenty-third. Uh, we had a couple of wires down, an oil spill with no damages. And we responded to eleven traffic collisions, uh, including one with a person trapped. And that is it for July, unless there's any questions.
No, any questions from the council? I see no questions. Okay, thank you very much, uh, Maria. I really appreciate. I was just checking and seeing if there's any more, any hands going up. I really appreciate you, the, the time that you spend coming here and visiting us and, and giving us all the updates. So, so thank you so much.
Did, did Reggie have a question?
I was just going to wonder if there's any, um, special precautions we need to take for this crazy fire season that seems to be taking off already.
Oh, well, you know, that's a really good question. And it is, uh, it, it is really, um, not looking great out there. You know, I listen to our, our calls every morning in the department. And, um, the fire, fire danger, fire weather is up there and the danger is out there. And I would really, really suggest that people pay attention and look at our Ready, Set, Go program. Uh, I know Dorothy has put a link to that on the Altadena Town Council website. It is on our website as well at fire.lacounty.gov. Um, you can even go straight to it by putting a forward slash RSG for Ready, Set, Go. It takes you right to the program. Um, so I would really encourage people to look at that program. Look at all the steps that they can take to protect their home uh, in the event that there is a wildfire, steps that you can take to prepare your home, prepare yourself to evacuate. The things that you should think about taking with you, how to plan for that. I, and I always recommend, I don't know if it's in the booklet, but I always recommend that people also sit down and, and make notes of the things that they have in their home that are most important to them that they would want to take with them if they had to evacuate quickly. And I usually recommend that people, um, put lists together that include the item and the location that it's in, in the house, so that you don't have to, when, you know, if, if, if the sheriffs come by and say you have ten minutes to get out of here, your mind turns to mush and you don't remember where everything is that you want. So it's a good idea to keep a list of what items you wanna take with you and where in the house they're located. It's a good idea to make a list, um, to make multiple lists or just kind of extend that list. And start it off, if I had to leave immediately and I had five minutes, these are the things that are most important. If I had fifteen minutes, I can grab these things as well. If I had thirty minutes, now I can grab these things as well. So you're kind of prioritizing the things that you need to take with you. Um, we also have videos on our website on how to harden your home, um, which we, we talk about those things in terms of how to prevent, uh, embers from entering into your home. Because most of the homes that, uh, burn during wildfires, uh, they start burning well before the fire even got to that area. They start burning because of the embers that are flying ahead of the fire. And those embers find a way into your house and it's usually through roof, um, through the roof uh, and the, the gutters, uh, at, at, at the roof line. And, um, most notably, it's through the vents. So we like to, we recommend that people put in ember-resistant vents so that those vents that go into your house, the embers can't get into your house that way. So those are the most, um, common ways that embers get into homes. So those are just a few of the things. Yes, Dorothy?
Oh, well, thank you for that. I, I just wanted to say how amazed I was, uh, that the Chinook. Helicopters, when the Glendora Ridge Fire was happening, right? And just seeing all of that activity, like, they ended up working through the night to kind of keep that fire. Um, I think it just stayed at fifty acres. But, uh, the Chinooks seem to play a big part in, in that. What do you think?
They, they have been a tremendous advantage and a tremendous asset for this department. We've used them a lot. We just used them a few days ago in Santa Clarita on the Jake incident. Uh, the Chinook came through and made, uh, quite a few drops actually over there. Uh, it's, it's, uh, it's very impressive when you actually see it up there and see it working because this helicopter is so big. Um, it's quite impressive, but it's, it's very accurate. Um, it shows that we, you know, relatively quickly. Uh, and it, um, it just does an amazing job. It, it's, the, the Chinook has been a tremendous asset for, for our department.
Yeah, and they were operating too, which was fun to watch. And then, uh, the Chinook actually showed up here in Altadena, uh, just, I think, a couple of days ago. We had this sort of false alarm fire, but it wasn't really a fire. Somebody reported, um, sort of dust in the air.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. It, yeah, there was, I think it was construction work.
Yeah. But the Chinook showed up for that, so. Thank you for, for your, all of your work.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, and the last thing I just wanna say, there is a, for us as a community, like, we really have to connect on this fire resilience and home hardening. So there is, you know, there is a lot of opportunity for Altadena to think about becoming a firewise community ourselves. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yes. I would agree with that.
Okay, um, I don't see any more questions, so, uh, thank you very much, uh, Maria. Really, again, we really appreciate your updates and thank you for taking the time to, uh, visit us on a monthly basis, so. Um, okay, I'm gonna move on, but, um, the next item would be, uh, community reports. But I am going to ask and see if there's any objections from the council. PSD Board Member Jennifer Lee, who is gonna do a presentation for us for item five. Um, she has to leave because of a, uh, a board issue or conflict happening, so I wanna see if there's any objections if we move up one right now so that we can actually get her report fitted in before she has to leave. Um, if I see no objections, I will move, I will move that item up one. Okay, I see no objection, so, um, I am gonna pass that over to, uh, right now. Again, I do apologize, but we're jumping up to make sure everyone fits in, so item five. And then we're gonna move to the community reports after, um, PUSD and Altadena by, uh, PUSD School Board, uh, a member and trustee, uh, Jennifer Lee, Jennifer Holley. You're on mute.
Oh, I'm unmuted. Okay, great. Um, thank you for having me. This is wonderful. I miss you all a lot. I really do. And, um, so I just wanted to start off by saying that on the school board, uh, we have voting districts. And I was, um, elected for District Two, but we do represent all the schools in PUSD. So I just recently did a town hall, like a town meeting, for Altadena Arts, Elliot Arts and Webster, three, um, PUSD schools here in the PUSD. And the first day of school, I went with the superintendent to Jackson and that was fantastic. And so the work that I've been doing is to do more of these town halls, which is some of the work that we did on the education committee for the town council. And it's been really enjoyable. It's definitely a different scene on the school board than it is Altadena Town Council. However, um, town council really prepared me in an incredible way to be a school board member. And I just really wanted to say that because the Altadena Town Council is very professional. And the work, what I learned being a council member has prepared me in the best possible way to be a school board member. And, um, I can take a few questions if that's your plan here. But the few things I wanted to say is that, um, Altadena Arts Magnet has grown tremendously. When I first started on Altadena Town Council, um, three, what was it, like three terms, twenty seventeen or something? No, it was probably twenty fourteen. It was a very small school. Now they are bursting at the seams at five hundred, almost five hundred students, which is an amazing thing. And now they are a K through A school with Elliot. Because the Altadena Arts, um, principal, Dr. Benita Shekel, has been promoted to being the Elliot principal, along with continuing her work as the Elliot Arts principal. And Lori Tullumian, the principal who was for Elliot Arts, is now at Marshall. And at Webster, we are working on, and I will be working very closely with Principal Forrest on a Armenian dual language program. P U S D has many dual language programs, Mandarin, Spanish, French at Altadena Arts, which will be moving also into the middle school. So you can do dual language French at Altadena Arts all the way through Elliot. And the Armenian, hopefully we'll do Armenian at Webster because we have an Armenian DLP. That's code for dual language immersion program at Blair. So that's kind of just a little bit of a quick overview. And, um, I don't know, Billy, what did you have planned for this presentation? Do you want me to keep talking a bit, or did you have a few questions?
It's more, it's just more an update that, uh, let everybody meet you. Um, and meet the new, uh, uh, P U S D board member, um, and ex-council member. So, um, and, and if anyone has any interest, just, um, I did go to the last town hall um, that happened a few days ago. And I have to say, uh, it was, it was very good, very informative and very enlightening. And the principals that, uh, Jennifer actually, um, highlighted at that particular town hall were all incredible, successful women that bring so much knowledge and, uh, and, and, and experience to P U S D. So, uh, so there's a lot of amazing work. If you haven't connected with P U S D recently, in the recent years, please do so and make sure you reach out to Jennifer. Now, does anyone have any questions for Jennifer? Okay, council member Aranda.
Hey Jennifer, good to see you. Um, I've been getting phone calls from friends who have their kids in the P U S D and they're wondering about, um, about the vaccine mandate for the people who work in the schools and, um, wondering when it will be on the agenda so they can, uh, discuss it.
Okay, so, P U S D has an incredible partnership with Pasadena Public Health Department and Dr. Ying Ying Go. So we're one of the first, um, districts in this area to offer vaccines for family members, students and staff. That's why we reached a 96% vaccination rate. So quickly. It's incredible, right? So, um, we also had a mandatory testing plan that the board decided upon. Then the governor came in with his directive, which is not a vaccine mandate. It is a directive that states one must show proof of vaccination or, for the unvaccinated, undergo mandatory testing once a week. So we are complying with that, that's fine, although our initial, um, understa- our initial directive was to go above and beyond that. And we are still going above and beyond with students. Now, as of today, there's going to be a nurse on every campus doing, um, testing for students. That directive will be coming out today. And I'm going to say that it's extremely important that school boards be high functioning. A high functioning school board equates with high functioning students. So trust on the school board is paramount for the education for every student. And that is the work that I am continuing to do, and I learned that on the Altadena Town Council, about trusting one another. So, the work that we are doing with the vaccines is along with the governor's directive. And we were on top of this prior to that, and we have that 96% vaccination rate, which I am extremely proud of. Thank you, Reggie. Any other questions?
Council member Vega?
Well, Ms. Lee, it's wonderful to see you. We've missed your smiling face. Um, I just wanted to find out where somebody could go to find out about future town halls.
Oh, well, you can call me, one, and I will be doing town halls, um, for many of the other schools in the area because this last one was, um, well attended, about 40 people showed up, which was great. And we're going to be doing more, uh, I think Norma Coons or Don Benito may be up next. I have to talk with those principals. Um, Don Benito seemed really interested in it, and they are in my voting district, District Two. And, um, what I will do when the next one is scheduled, I'm going to let the Altadena Town Council know so you can all come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any more, council member Wong?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank, uh, Jennifer, um, Lee for your great work, um, and diligence with the P U S D. And I just want to attest as someone, um, you know, who hasn't been to a P U S D, um, meeting and meeting the principals, that was so much fun and seeing the passion in the room, uh, between the board, the principals, the parents and other advocacy groups. That was awesome. So thanks for hosting.
Thanks for being there. I appreciate that, uh, you and Billy were there. I do, I really do. Thank you so much.
A- any other questions?
Keep it up, Jennifer, keep it up.
Thank you, Reggie. I miss you all so much. And it's true, you made me so much better as, um, a public servant. You really did. It, it's a professional team there on the Altadena Town Council, and, um, I'm really thankful. I, I spent three terms there.
It, it was always a pleasure working with Jennifer, and, uh, it, it's, it makes us all so proud to see you now moving forward. And being a huge advocate, not just for the school district, but for our kids too. Um, as most of us have our kids in P U S D because we, we trust in P U S D. And again, it's, uh, thank you for your hard work and for your advocacy, so. Um, I think that's it.
Thanks, Jen.
Any last comment, Jennifer?
No, just thank you for having me. Thank you for thinking of P U S D, and I appreciate that. And, and, and we will continue to serve all of our children. Thank you.
Maybe you can come once a quarter, Jennifer, and give us an update on what's going on.
I would love to do that. Thank you so much. All right. Bye-bye.
Well, we might see you next quarter. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, and again, I do apologize for the rotation of the, um, agenda, but I appreciate everyone's, um, efforts in, in accommodating everybody to make it happen. So, item four, 4.1, we have the Altadena Library. Now, um, I did get an email that Nikki and Victor will not be able to be here this evening um, to do a presentation, but they did, um, email me some, uh, some notes, um, that I will provide for these updates for the, uh, for the town council on their behalf. Um, so this is, this is, uh, for item 4.1, the Altadena Library. Um, the operating hours continue to be the main library Monday through Saturday, 12, uh, 12:00 PM, noon to 5:00 PM. Bob Lucas Library, Monday through Friday, uh, noon, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Uh, they will expand, expand to have evening hours at the main library starting the week after Labor Day on Tuesday. Uh, we will be open on Tuesday, starting on 9/7, from noon to 8:00 PM. We will continue to assess hours based on traffic and demand for hours. Passport appointments are being taken Monday through Saturday between, uh, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And they are currently booked for the next four to five weeks, so call as soon as you need to apply for a passport. August has been a programming break for all departments. They will kick off again in September. This includes bilingual story times for children in both Spanish and Cantonese, Super Smash Brothers video game tournaments, Seed Library on the first Saturday of the month, and lots and lots more. Check out dates and times at the Altin- AltadenaLibrary.org/programs. Save the date. The Altadena Library Foundation's annual Taste of Dina fundraiser is scheduled for Saturday, September the 25th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We are still planning for an in-person event in the main library parking lot. The silent auction will be online again this year, so even if you can't attend, you can still bid on the amazing items. There will also be a wine pool and delicious food and wine to sample. If you know anyone that would be interested in sponsoring this event, please send them, um, my way, and that would be to Nikki. The Capital Improvement Community Focus Group will be meeting for the first time next Thursday, uh, August the 26th at 4:00 PM. Thank you to the town council for nominating Chris O'Malley to be a part of this group to provide feedback and input on the two library renovation projects. Definitely more info to come in the future. Uh, those are the big things to update on. If there are any questions, please don't have, hesitate to reach out through Nikki's email and have a great night. Um, if you have any questions, I'm probably not the person to answer them. But, but feel free to contact Nikki. Okay, I'm gonna move on to item 4.2, to the Altadena Chamber of Commerce, Doug Cauliflower.
Thanks, Billy. Good evening, everybody. I just have a, a couple of things. Uh, the window is still open for the chamber and, uh, for those that may be interested in, uh, joining our board as a director. Uh, the window will be open probably till about the middle of October. Uh, Diane Marcusson is the chair of our nominating committee this year. So you can direct inquiries either to her, her or, uh, email or telephone the office. It's a great opportunity to get involved in your community and contribute to your community. Uh, there is a, uh, I hate to use the word application, members say, application and, um, statement of interest that we ask you to complete, so please, uh, you know, share with your neighbors and, and, and those that that are in the community. And actually, you don't have to reside in Altadena to serve on our board. Um, you can have interest in Altadena, but you don't have to reside in the community. Um, and then secondly, I'm pleased to announce we are going to have our first mixer on September 23rd. It'll be hosted by Outward Bound on the John Muir Campus. Um, but it'll be 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Uh, PM, and Dorothy, I will get you all the details once the, the flyer is done, so you can add it to the calendar. So we're looking forward to that, and hopefully, uh, we can still do it. It'll be in person. That's the plan right now. Hopefully that doesn't change because of the the shift in COVID, but, uh, again, those details will be out very shortly. I mentioned last time we did a, a member survey, and as a result of that survey, there's a lot of interest from our members for mixers. And the calendar is not complete, but it looks like we're going to be having a mixer probably monthly. We got booked up for the next year, so. That calendar hopefully will be finished pretty soon. We'll get it up on our website, and then we'll certainly feed the, uh, the council's website on a monthly basis as well, so. That's exciting, and, uh, otherwise, the, the mixers are free to members, by the way. And everybody is welcome, and there is a $5 charge for non-members, but everybody is welcome and encouraged to attend, so. Unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have, Billy. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Doug. I appreciate the update. I'm gonna move on. Item 4.3, Los Angeles County Parks and Recreation, Sam Estrada.
Hello, everybody. I'm just gonna give you a brief summary of what went on in, uh, July and through, uh, the first week of August. Um, we concluded our Everybody Plays Summer, um, program, and that was held at Charles White and Loma Alta Park, Monday through Friday from 11:00 to 5:00 PM for seven-year-olds and 12-year-olds. Um, it was a great event that we, or a great program that we had. Uh, unfortunately, we weren't able to do the summer camp as we normally do, but we were able to at least provide some sort of recreation for everybody that came out to be part of this program. Um, the swimming pool is still currently open. Um, it's open Monday through Friday, uh, from 12:30 to 2:30 and from 3:00, uh, to 4:45, and it's also open on Saturdays as well. Um, the last day for the pool will be August 22nd. We also wrapped up our Sports For All clinics, uh, the very first week of August. Uh, we had basketball and baseball clinics for our groups of ages six to eight and nine to 11 years old. Um, so it's great to be able to provide those free clinics for kids that came out to be part of that program. Um, we also had our Parks After Dark, um, wrap-up on August 7th. And we were fortunate to have, uh, supervisor Katherine Barger be part of the, uh, grand finale at Loma Alta Park. Um, she was there during the Who Dad's, um, and was, did a small speech and thanked everybody for being there. And we appreciate the contribution from the board office to provide our Parks After Dark event. Uh, so it was great to see everybody that came out to, for the concert, and everybody that was there was also able to get a free, um, blanket, um, and a food box from our regional food bank, so. It was great. Um, it was a little modified this year as it was in the, as, as opposed to how it's been in the past. Normally, we've done Thursday, Friday, Saturday. This year, we did Friday, Saturday, with the movies being on Fridays and the concerts on Saturdays, so. Um, we appreciate everybody that took part in it and that was there on Saturday and came out on Fridays to watch the movies. So thank you again to everybody that was there. Um, and then just a little update on each site, uh, in Altadena. Uh, Farnsworth Park, um, still has the pickleball program still going. Um, the summer concert series is still going strong, and we thank the Rotary for that as well. Um, construction update, the construction project is nearly to complete, to completion. Um, there's just some few minor details with the Davies Building, um, and then it should be wrapped up in the coming weeks. Um, National Night Out with the LA County Sheriff's on August 3rd, um, was a great event that we had. Um, we thank the sheriffs for that and everybody that came out for that event, and, uh, and park supervisor Alejandro Miranda was there that evening, and so it was a great turnout from the Altadena community. So thank you to everybody that was there for that. Um, Charles White, um, as I said earlier, had the Everybody Plays program, so, um, now that's to completion. So, and Dorothy mentioned earlier in this meeting that we have the Peace Walk event with the My, with My Tribe Rise. And that will be this Saturday, um, 8:00 AM to 12:30. It's gonna be a community breakfast with arts and crafts, health and fitness, and among other activities. Um, and then also, the Parks Department will be providing free blankets and food boxes to anybody that attends. Um, so we will be having a booth, uh, in addition to this event. So come out and come get a blanket. Um, it is first come, first served, and it's one blanket per, um, per fam- per, um, per person that attends. Um, and then Loma Alta, uh, we have our, um, our Hour Spot Program. The Hour Spot Program, uh, just started up again in the fall session, so. Um, if you got the flyer at the school, um, we'll be having kids coming up, um, Monday through Friday, starting at 2:30. They'll be doing a back-to-school kind of, or kind of deal where they reopen the program to the kids in a safe manner, so. Come check it out. We have a great act time and great time with the kids. Um, so far, we have about 25 kids coming on a daily to the program, so it's great to see the kids back in that program. Um, we are having our fall programming, uh, starting up next month. Um, for our Recreation For All, it's a free program for ages seven to 17 years of age. Um, it starts on September 7th and it goes through May 27th. Um, it'll be on Tuesday through Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00. Five, on Friday, it'll be 5:30 to 6:30, and then on Saturday, it'll be from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. During that time, Loma Alta will be providing a free basketball program while Farnsworth Park will be providing a free ballroom dance class. Um, and then lastly, we'll be doing our Everybody.
I think we lost Sam.
I think his battery may have died because it was perfect and then gone.
He said last. Yeah.
You're back, sort of.
Yep.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Yeah, so lastly, I don't know if you heard this part, it's the Everybody Plays After School. Um, it's a free program. It's September 7th through, uh, May 27th, Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 5:30 from seven to 17 years of age. Um, and unfortunately, we've had a lot of parents ask, are we picking up kids like we have in the past? And unfortunately, at this time, we are, we are unable to, but parents can drop off their kids for this program. So if you do want to have your child in this program, it is free. It is a non-custodial program, so they do not have to sign up for it. But we will have staff there to monitor the program for it entirely through 5, 2:30 to 5:30. So that wraps up my report for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Sam before we move on? Council member Jones?
Hi, Sam. I, um, think I sent you an email about this, about the equipment at Charles White Park. The exercise equipment. It really needs to be replaced. It's broken and rusty. I had two people and I went down and looked at it.
So it's. Yeah, we, we're working with our, our, that, we, that's on our radar. we, that's on our radar because we are working with our park planner to see if we can get a replacement equipment for the damaged equipment that's down there.
Yeah, okay, before someone gets hurt on it, but thank you.
Yeah, but I will bring that up to them again as it is a concern for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, thanks again. Thank you, Sam. And again, I know you come every month religiously, so we really appreciate your time and your update. So thank you and we'll see you next month.
All right. Thank you, Billy.
Moving on, so items, we're gonna, we already had item five. So moving on, item six, Committee Reports. We're gonna start with six point one, Safe Streets for Councilmember Wong.
Hi, thank you. So one of the agenda items was just talked about by Sam. Peace in the Park Event that's coming up on eight twenty-one. We really want to activate our community. So there will be a community walk and roll around the park. Also, Highway Patrol will be providing some traffic safety information. And we'll be giving away helmets and reflectors for the kids, coloring books and stuff like that. We're also doing a free bicycle repair via the Altadena Bicycle Club and hopefully one of our local bike shops will assist us. So that is happening and some of the programming will definitely be focusing on mobility justice and envisioning and how people feel around the park. So if anybody wants to get involved, please join. And also, yeah, so that's that free breakfast, everything we talked about. We did not receive the Active Transportation Planning Grants. So Altadena was not selected. So there isn't one in the plans at this point, but coming up, the county just finished their their sort of request for proposals to do, to update LA County's Bicycle Master Plan for unincorporated Los Angeles. So that will be all of the unincorporated areas, including Altadena. So they are hoping to select the organizations that will be working on the LA County Bicycle Master Plan. And then if anybody wants to get involved, they are taking, the county is taking interested names in our community. And there will be outreach done by, from these groups. Slow streets are still winding down. And so as equipment runs out or if certain signs are getting squished and run over, they are not being replaced. So I'm still, I haven't heard an actual stop date and actually slow streets are going through California State Legislation for working on some permanent slow street networks. That would be related to, you know, sort of California Vehicle Code. So that will be exciting. Also, we're looking to do some walk audits. So if anybody's interested, that would be a great way while these slow streets signs are up, or if anybody has a concern in their community. I have amassed some AARP. They're really cool. They're just sort of walk audits that you can take with your community, fill out the information. And then I just wanted to put out there that there are free sort of, I guess I want to call them programs, initiatives that Berkeley Safe Trek runs. So with Jackson Elementary, we had done a community bicycling and pedestrian safety training and focused on safe routes to schools around Jackson. So Berkeley Safe Trek just wanted me to share that they are open and willing to, you know, work with our community and a lot of it is community engagement, right Veronica? Then we got a little report out of it, but it did bring together, just like Victoria talked about, how, you know, it really brought together the county, Highway Patrol, the community members, and it's really empowering. So if anyone's interested, there's a variety of programs. I can help work, you know, show you where it is. Maybe we can have a meeting. Anyway, that's pretty much it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nat.
Hi, Victoria.
Hi, I'm just curious if you have any idea how Metro Micro is doing. I see the vans going through town and like what's ridership look like?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So they are proud to say, I don't have the numbers, but of all of the microtransit pilots that are going on across Los Angeles County, that Altadena, Pasadena, Sierra Madre are, are microtransit is the highest performing. In fact, that's why sometimes you have to wait, like if you so now they're also trying to hire and train more drivers to then increase capacity. So yay for Altadena. And they are still taking, since this is a pilot, it's a great, you know, opportunity to think about how to maximize its potential. You know, and grow with transit. Thanks for asking.
I can, I can report that both of my boys are using it right now. One from P S D for passing high and the other one to come back from grocery outlet where he's working three days a week. So our family is right on there.
That's cool. Great. All right. Any more questions? Otherwise, we're gonna move on to the, okay, moving on. Items six point two, Land Use Committee. I'm gonna hand this over to Councilmember Marcusson.
Okay. So I have a quick update on Owen Brown's grave site. For the C U P for La Vina, a couple of weeks ago, the headstone for Owen Brown's grave was replaced. Here's a picture of what the grave looked like in nineteen oh seven and what it looks like today. Thanks so much to all who participated in this labor-intensive job, particular thanks to Paul Ayers, who used his skills to locate the exact site of the grave. Cliff Douglas for his excellent stonework and Mark Goldschmidt for his expert design work and headstone detailing. The Owen Brown Graveside Committee now moves forward with the additional components of the Board of Supervisors approved scope of the project, including possible historical designation, educational materials, and transfer of the land to a conservancy. The next Owen Brown Graveside Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for September eighth at six P M. But when the county confirms that they can get the Zoom at that time, I'll send that out to everybody. It's just tentative right now. So they did a pretty good job, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I will stop the share. Okay, so the Land Use Committee reviewed, oh, I'm sorry, the Land Use Committee, we're two weeks, two weeks ago, reviewed the twenty twenty, twenty eighty, sorry, twenty eighty Fair Oaks Project that Alan Peck is going to present to us tonight. We voted unanimously to approve the product, to recommend approval of the project without conditions in land use. You're on mute.
I'm muting as we speak. Good evening. I'm here to report to you on project number R P P L two zero two zero 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 eight one five three, which is a proposed new drive-in and walk-up bakery at twenty eighty North Fair Oaks. I will be going over the results of our canvas and of other people who contacted us to make comments later. But first, I want to introduce you to Sonia Chang. This is actually her baby that she has been working on for quite some time. And a lot of people are excited to see this moving forward, but the first thing she's gonna do is give us her presentation. Sonia, you should be able to screen share if you have the presentation.
And yeah. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to present to you twenty eighty Fair Oaks Avenue. The newest Bakery Cafe Healthy Food Drive-Thru Pre-Order Third-Party Delivery Option for Altadena. So I own My Sweet Cupcake, which used to be in South Pasadena on Mission and Meridian, across from the Gold Line Metro. Our claim to fame is that we won cupcake wars. So we have quite the following. With the landlord more than doubling my rent, I decided to find a new location. And Altadena has been on my radar for a while. So when the Fair Oaks became available, we decided that it was a good time to move into the neighborhood and bring My Sweet Cupcake along with a brand that will represent a healthy, fast, grab-and-go kind of quick-service application for the community. Because we all know we have busy lives, so we need to have healthy nutritious food to keep us going. And I also teach cooking classes. I used to teach through Whole Foods Market, Healthy Cooking for Kids, Lunchbox Makeover, What to Take When You Don't Want a Sandwich. And so that kind of was the start for my cooking school. So eventually we'll be adding healthy cooking lessons and fun community events to get people to have nutritious, healthy lifestyle and to just build community bonding experiences. So I would like to also let you know that I'm a former kindergarten teacher. So I speak very much like a kindergarten teacher. So I hope that you will excuse some of the, I guess, the kiddie references and the excitement that I have over it. But, you know, in kindergarten, everything's exciting. So without further ado, may I introduce Jessica, who is from my architect firm. And she has this wonderful presentation, very much more high-tech than my kindergarten brain could handle. So I'm gonna let her take it off and show you the wonderful PowerPoint presentation that she and her team have created.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica. Thank you, Sonia, so much for the intro and for Adam, for Alan and Madeline for surveying the neighborhood. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen to kind of talk about the scope of the project and a little bit more technically about what we are going to be proposing. Are you able to see my screen okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Okay, so as Sonia previously said, I'm from K S K Design. We handle the architecture and planning sort of side of things. And twenty eighty Fair Oaks is gonna be the home, hopefully, to the new drive-through cafe. My Sweet Cupcake, which is centrally named. The scope of the project is gonna have three main components. First, we're going to change the existing church recreational center to a drive-through cafe. Currently, it's currently vacant, but it's more of like a formal zoning change. Second, we'll be demolishing nine hundred forty-nine square footage of the vacant building and be adding nine hundred thirty-two square footage to the existing building. So this dotted outline is the part of the building that we'll be demolishing. And this over here is what we'll be adding. The overall lot size is around eleven thousand six hundred square footage. And the building footprint will be, take up about seventy, seventeen percent of that space. Currently, it's vacant, but lot itself is pretty, in pretty bad disrepair and it's like gated off, which is unfortunate because it's located, oh, here's like a few more pictures. It's located in one of Altadena's commercial corridors. On the same block, there are a few other restaurants that My Sweet Cupcake would be joining. We were hoping to like liven up this area again by bringing in like an independently owned business and bring traffic and, and like business through, through that part of Altadena. This is the proposed site plan. There's a lot going on, so I've broken it down to different colors. But the orange is going to be the drive-through lane. We'll be providing some bike parking, two short-term biking, short-term bike parking spots in the front and two long-term in the back. We'll be providing eleven parking spaces for customer and employees. This meets LA County and like Altadena's zoning code requirements. For the pole lighting and the exterior lighting going around the building, we'll be using dark sky lighting fixtures to direct the light straight onto, you know, the ground and reduce the light pollution, especially for the resident, residential properties in the north and side of the property. And the parking lot in the back could potentially be used just for, Fiona is really excited to bring in like different stuff, like cooking classes and like potential pop-up shops. So, yeah, there's like a lot of potential there. In terms of customer navigation, people coming in on foot would be accessing the indoor sales area through the front entrance over here. And this red area, red arrow kind of shows the path of navigation coming in from the parking lot in the back. There's, there's gonna be like a back door that leads them to the front sales area. Here's a close, close-up of the inside floor plan. Kind of going from the backling up the ADA ramp over to the sales area over here. And this would be the front door with North Fair Oaks being over here. This, this is gonna be the vehicle navigation. The orange arrow shows like cars coming in. Pulling into the driveway, they would have the option of either parking in the back or going through the drive-through. Blue arrows are gonna be for the cars pulling out or having just finished going through the drive-through. There'll be, yeah, pretty self-explanatory. We did do a traffic queuing analysis, which we contracted out to some traffic engineers to see if our lot would be able to handle the amount of cars we estimate would be coming in during peak hours. And we found that like comparing other drive-through restaurants of the same, of similar sizes. During peak hours, we would have to hold about six vehicles during, within the drive-through lane and eight vehicles during, yeah, eight vehicles like throughout the whole like property in general. And which we're able to definitely accommodate for with some room left over using our proposed site plan. These are the architectural elevations. And we're going for something that's like contemporary with like natural wood accents outside. And that's pretty much it for my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might, might have or go over any parts of the slide in particular.
Is there any questions from the council? I can't see everybody, so is the shared screen? So if you have a question, just voice it up and then I will, obviously, this is Alan and Madeline's lead, so
Dorothy has a question, Billy.
What's that?
Dorothy.
Okay, Dorothy.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, Jessica. Can you go back to the, the parking? Sort of that? Yeah, that one. Okay, so just my question to you again is, again, everyone's gonna enjoy all the great treats there. So it just looks to me like if you happen to, again, surpass the number six, like someone's getting five hundred cupcakes or something, whatever that could happen. It just doesn't look like the cars, let's say all your parking spaces are full and if the cars have to then sort of go into that parking lot, you know, to prevent any backing up. It doesn't look like it's wide enough for a car to actually make a U-turn, so to speak, without going into a parking slot. What are your thoughts on that?
Oh, so you're worried. Oh, so actually, this parking lot right here, it's a little bit hard to see, but
Like if the car comes in from that southern, southern end and then it has to continue into the queue. But you haven't
There's twenty-six. There's twenty-six um, square footage of like clearance right here between the stalls, and I know that that's up to zoning code. Um, it's really super highly unlikely that all these like spots will be full in addition to like there being a lot of cars over here. But in the traffic study, we also did um, uh, recommend of a flagman to be on site during peak hours, so similar to like um, like a stop sign person like during like school hours. So we would have like um, someone, especially during like events or where we're like anticipating like a lot of people, um, someone on site to help navigate the traffic and stuff like that.
And then is there, I don't know if you guys can answer this question, but you know, since the cars will be kind of um, you know, waiting, and it's next to where the neighbor is sort of that zoned, but people are living there, like.
North side, yeah.
Yeah, are there any requirements? Does anyone know if there's any requirements like health-wise, because it's right next to a residence? You know, if the cars are, you know, idle.
Yeah, that's still zoned commercial, so.
Yeah.
Code, code is for commercial.
Okay. And then the last thing is just when the cars come out, um, how are you reminding the drivers that a pedestrian might be walking across that crosswalk? Like, is there?
Same as every other drive-through.
Uh, but besides the, the striping that we're gonna have, um, I guess we could like put a sign being like.
Yeah.
Um, reminding them that pedestrians will be walking, crossing here.
Yeah.
Okay, just that there's some mindfulness there, like.
Yeah.
Into the day that's the transit route also, so if people are taking transit, and then they're using your front entrance, just with safety. Thank you.
Okay, any, any more questions from the councils? So I can't see everybody, so if you have a question, please.
I don't, I don't have a question, I don't have a question, just a comment that uh, the, the uh, cooking education could be awesome, because there's a Boys and Girls Club right up the street that my, my son used to go to. You guys really could work something in there, because those kids are sitting around with their phones, being kind of bored and not learning anything.
Well, I, I use cooking as a vehicle to teach academics and social skills and cultural awareness. So cooking has been used in my kindergarten as a way to grab kids' attention, because every Friday we would cook a lesson based on the book that we just finished.
Wow, that's cool.
So we did fraction fruit salad, we did streaganola, and we made spaghetti and meatballs. And we did Ignatius Rock using fudge.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Um, Sonia, thank you very much for the presentation.
I have questions, Alan. It's Victoria.
Yeah, can I ask a quick question, can, before Victoria actually starts? Could you stop screen sharing so that we can see everybody, so should?
Sure.
See who's speaking and who's got the question. Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Nat.
Um, I'm sorry that I missed our Land Use Committee meeting in August, and I did review the notes that were sent out. I do have a couple of questions. One, um, where in the drive-through queuing are orders placed versus where they're picked up?
Orders are placed using the phone app and online, and then they should be paid for online and in the app to reduce idling time and congestion in the drive-through. So once you reach the window, you give them your order number, and it should be ready for you.
Okay, that was my next question. What is your delivery time estimated to be per order? Meaning the top, from the time they queue up and get to your window and be able to hand them their order and them to move out? Is it?
If it hasn't been pre-ordered, so most of the things will be ordered on the website, since you know how you can order food on your website, similar to like our own version of DoorDash. And then you would be able to pick it up, giving us your order confirmation number. And so that way, it reduces people trying to figure out what they want to order, or trying to get money from their, you know, cars to the cashier, so it reduces that time significantly. We will still have a few people who didn't do that, and we're not gonna turn away customers, so we'll take their order. But majority of the people will be ordering online.
And then as they are exiting the parking lot to Fair Oaks, it looks as though they can make a right or a left-hand turn. Is there a left-hand tur- is there a um, a center median that allows them to pull into, okay?
Yes, there is.
Yes, we looked on uh, Google Earth to confirm that during the last meeting, the subcommittee meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Okay, Councilmember Long, and we have, okay.
Yeah, just another question. Do you have, have you guys done a calculation or uh, look at other reference since uh, you know, sort of DoorDash and Grubhub, all of these are so popular uh, for them using those stalls? Like, have you done an analysis, or has the county?
I am following the model of Kitchen United in Pasadena, which was the former Cordon Bleu, and also incorporating the drive-through concept, which is in Colony, a ghost kitchen in Santa Monica. So I've incorporated the best of both of those, and then the community aspect comes from Forager Kitchen in Oakland, where they involve the community and they have outdoor dining and music events.
So you'll feel good where the, where those drivers will park? Like, they might park on one side of the parking lot to come and get?
Oh, yeah, we can have, uh, we have enough parking that we can have a booth or stall or whatever that's sick, that's designated as third-party delivery, and then we'll also have our own third-party delivery, which I hope most customers will use, um, because there's less processing fee, like DoorDash takes up to thirty percent.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, go, go back to your, Councilmember Mick.
Yes, i- if there are no other questions, I will go forward and uh, do a review of our canvas. Let's see, but to that end, just to uh, put this in context, I'm gonna share a screen. It should be, uh, it's this one. Try that again.
We, we can see it.
You can see it?
Yep.
Okay, well, then maybe I'm blocking it from myself. Okay, fine, good. I, okay, you see Fair Oaks here. This is the property, twenty eighty North Fair Oaks. Uh, we canvassed an area that went from Raymond. Actually, when, when Madeline and I initially canvassed, we thought Montana Street was the border. So we canvassed from up here to Montana and along here, and then back up Fair Oaks. Uh, we ended up knocking on about twenty doors. We spoke to about ten people, in fact, exactly ten people, out of which eight had a positive response, and two were just neutral and said they would give it to their parents or give it to uh, whoever owns the establishment, they could get back to us. But in all twenty instances, we left information so they could get back to us. And in fact, they did. In fact, uh, and that will come up when I discuss uh, the comments that have come in. However, in terms of the comments we got during the I, by canvassing that we did, the responses were overwhelmingly positive. Now, just as an aside, we uncovered quite a few other things going on in the neighborhood and addressed some other issues in, in the midst of doing this canvas. But I, in terms of, there seems to be general, I, they're welcoming the idea of having a drive-through bakery. Okay, but then, we also have the responses to the people that I emailed in.
Alan, excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you stop sharing so we can all see each other again? Thanks for showing us the visual. Yeah, thanks for showing us the visual.
Uh-huh. I, I probably will come back to that, but it will be much later. Let's see, let me stop sharing.
Just at the top, it should say stop sharing. If you point to the top of the screen.
Got it. Okay, fair enough. And uh, so I have the comments from the people who I emailed in.
Yeah, if you wanna just read those into the record, and then we'll see if there are any questions from the um, council.
That is not a problem.
Okay.
The first is from Scott Dillough. He is, he is uh, contacting us from a business named Ducks Cake Mix, which is on De Lacy Avenue in Pasadena, and basically, I, "Hi, Alan. I wholeheartedly support this project as a bakery-related business owner in Pasadena. I know how much options like this are needed in the area. It is very difficult to find the kitchen space all entrepreneurs need to take their businesses to the next level. Sonia's project will serve as much as a much-welcome helping hand to the industry. I kindly urge you to do everything in your power to help get this project approved." That was the first response. The second comes from Fareed Faruki. Uh, let's see. And Harmony Bites is a nonprofit in food insecurity and social enterprise in communities of LA and Orange County. "We are proud to be partnered with Cali Granola with Sonia as its founder. Uh, we support the work she is doing in the community with economic development, nutritional food options, and creating jobs and trading. We wish her well in getting the necessary approval to get her business built and thrive soon, sincerely." That's the second comment. The third comes from Denise Dos, and it says, "Yes, I approve. Alan, please approve this project on twenty eighty North Pharaoh Avenue of Altadena. Thank you, and God bless."
She's a resident of Altadena, so.
Okay, thank you, cause I, I, I wasn't able to get that information. This next one comes from Michael Chang. Let's see, "I have been a consumer and a supporter of Sonia's work at Cali Granola. Thank you for considering and supporting her work for it is expected, for its expected benefits for the community best." Okay, this next one comes from Kate Zhang. Let's see, Kate Zhang manages twenty-seven East Montana Street in Pasadena. It's an apartment building, and let's see, again, I'm gonna share very quickly just to point, point out where it's located. Okay, it's located right here.
We can't see a pointer, Alan.
You can't see the pointer?
No, when you're pointing, we can't see.
Okay, then uh, it is at the corner of East Montana Street and Mulan Alley. It's the rectangular building uh, on the northeast corner. Okay, and just for reference sake, uh, Taco Bell slash Kentucky Fried is on the corner of Montana and uh, North Pharaohs. It's the building that is next to them.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll read the comment. Let's see. "We are adjacent to Taco Bell and are constantly subject to cleaning up the trash their customers leave behind around our apartment building. When it is drive-through, the business doesn't provide bathroom facilities. Their clients need to find a place to use the bathroom, thus result in people coming behind our trash bin and leaving feces around on a regular basis. This situation frustrates our management very much. The city should not allow multiple drive-throughs without providing bathroom facilities anywhere." That is, that is the extent of her comment. Let me uh, undo the Zoom, in fact.
Okay.
We didn't see the Zoom last time, so you don't have to undo anything.
Oh.
Yeah. Perfect, you're fine.
It was you the whole time.
Well, well, I was looking at it anyway.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, but there's one last comment, and it is short. I thought I had one last comment.
We do have two bathrooms in, in our.
Yes, and let's see, okay, I do have two more. This one is from Amir Almad- Almadari. And let's see, "Sonia and I are working on a few different community building projects with cottage food operators, and the plans for Sonia's space would be the perfect platform to feature these small businesses and provide them with the guidance and resources to take their projects to the next level. I am very excited about this space and hope you will lend your support to this cool initiative that she is working tirelessly to realize."
I will add that I am a SBA advisor for Cottage Food Operations through the New Economic Women's Group in Canoga Park. So that's what he's talking about when he says that I am mentoring and teaching cottage food operations.
Okay, well, actually, I think that's awesome, that that's an aside. Of course, I'm impartial.
But keep moving.
The last comment is from Celeste Young Ramos. And it reads as follows, "Hi, Alan. My name is Celeste Young Ramos. I am the Food Service Program Manager at the New Economics for Women's Business Center. We are a SBA-sponsored small business development center which supports approximately two hundred and sixty food entrepreneurs. I am writing in support of Sonia Chang's Commercial Kitchen at twenty eighty North Pharaoh Avenue in Altadena. This is a very important, this is a very important need to the food service community, and I hope your council will approve it. There is a shortage of commercial kitchens for caterers, food manufacturers, or ghost kitchens, which are very popular and a necessary means for starting and necessary means and starting point for food preparation for many small entrepreneurs. Nearly every approved commercial by the Los Angeles Health Department is located in the city of Los Angeles. I'm sure they meant commercial kitchen. There are none in this vicinity, which really hampers the business owners and forces their revenues into the city of LA instead of Altadena, or it forces them to operate illegally out of their homes, which poses a health and safety risk to your residents. In addition, I have known Sonia Chang for seven years, and she is a hot, she is a high-level food service professional who I know will ensure that the facility is operated at a high level of food safety and sanitation. From the plans I have seen, her facility is excellently designed and has such a variety of cooking spaces that I know it will be sought out by food entrepreneurs. Thank you for your consideration and listening to my vote of support. If you have any questions, you can contact me at attached website. That is the last comment. And I solicited comments from all the members of the Altadena County Council. Any more questions, Victoria?
So I just wanna be clear, um, I appreciate all of the um, following and support that this um, bakery has. But the comments that you just read, one or two were from affected residents in the nearby area, is that correct? I just wanna, I'm trying to sort through. You referenced the apartment owner, and then Sonia referenced someone that was an Altadena resident, but didn't denote whether they were immediately impacted by this proposal.
I, Sonia would be the best one to answer that, because I don't know the addresses of their.
Well, Alan. Excuse me, and, and ju- just for time-wise, I just want to be clear, and I want this from Alan. We are not, uh, uh, what is it, we are exact, actually um, lis- con- considering in this case? Is it only the drive-through?
Well.
The action of the CUP, what, what is everything on the CUP?
Billy, it's, it's, if I, if I might, it's the drive, it's the drive-through, but when we, you know, when we approve these or recommend approval or denial of a project um, for a drive-through, we look at the parking and the traffic and, you know, all of those things as well. I think it's important to note, Alan, that at the beginning of your statement, when you had your um, map up, I think you were saying that you had eight people in favor that you talked to, right?
Yes.
Can you go back to that, please?
Sure, um. I.
And then we'll do a motion.
Okay, we knocked on twenty doors, out of which ten we spoke to. You know, we had an opportunity to speak with ten people. Out of the ten people we spoke to, eight of them were in favor. In fact, to the point of enthusiastic favor with the project, two were indifferent. You know, they're, uh, let's see. And then, the negative email that we got was a result of the information that we left on those other ten. I said we knocked on twenty doors. They got that information. That's the basis upon which they responded. So technically, I guess that would be eleven people that responded directly due to our efforts. Uh, let's see, but you already see the numbers. That would be eight approved, two indifferent, one negative. Um, let's see.
Okay, so, so can we move on to a motion now, guys? Just if there's any other important questions. Okay, Alan, go ahead.
If there are no other questions, I move that we, the full council, recommend this CUP. Uh, let's see, R P P L two zero two zero 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 eight one five three for twenty eighty North Pharaohs in Altadena. We recommend that the CUP be approved.
Second. Without condition.
Without condition.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all those in favors say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now I want a cupcake.
You guys, this was supposed to be the easy one tonight. Now we're moving on to the hard one. So thank you, Sonia. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's been great to meet everyone virtually and thank you, Alan.
We, we have another project, which is the River Way project that we're going to review. The Land Use Committee in June reviewed the project on River Way. Um, we were at the June first meeting and the Land Use Committee voted twelve to one against recommend, I'm sorry, one four, twelve four and one against recommending denial of the project. So the Land Use Committee is bringing this project to you recommending denial of the project. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Take it away, yeah.
Yes, thank you, I will.
And, and what I, what I want to make sure of is that I think everybody was here at the June meeting. And I think you've all had questions answered and things, so I, I want to make sure that we're keeping everything. Just be cognizant of the time. It's nine PM already. Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to toss it to Hannah.
Oh. Sorry, Hannah.
No worries. Uh, well, allow me to reintroduce the homeowners Andrea Dalton and Omari Thomas. And I just want to ask them, did they want to share a few brief words before the architect's presentation? Can't see them, I guess. Okay, I'm assuming not.
Andrea's, uh, looks like she's getting on.
Okay.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was just dealing with the new baby here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, well, I guess for the most part, Greg, to talk about like some of the changes we made. We, we had considered kind of coming back and trying to meet with the council and our neighbors and stuff again, but we just didn't feel like it was conducive to like a positive movement towards going forward. So that's why we wanted to just bring it straight to you guys to kind, um, our architect has made some changes to try to get closest as possible. You know, we're just excited to get moving forward and be a part of the community too. And, um, that's, that's pretty much it. I hope that Greg can kind of answer your questions and just convey like where we're at with the changes that we made, right?
Okay, thanks Andrea. And so Gregory, please take it away.
Hello, everybody. Uh, thank you for your time. As was just explained, we were presented that the land use committee and, um, uh, didn't go well. So we went back to look at the, the last remaining variance request. We started out with two and we're down to the one last variance request, which is a request uh, for a building that exceeds twenty-three feet in height. Feet of the property line. We looked at, um, what the possibilities are. So we, we, we looked at a couple of things. One, the, the location of the, our building in relationship to the neighbors. So you can see here, this is our project here. And these two areas on the east and west side are the areas that are projected into the fifteen feet restriction. This neighbor is about thirty feet away from us with a tree um, between her building, her house and our, our proposed building. Uh, neighbor to the west, uh, we've got about fifteen foot separation between the, uh, the building, the two houses. And, um, this is a ADU in the back that is about, uh, twenty-three feet separation from this neighboring house. So our contention is this, is that, uh, we understand that the need for an ordinance like this, but our position is that this ordinance greatly disadvantages homeowners that have narrow lots. Because what it does, it, it tries, it, it separates and segments the possibility of, of, of roof projections or roof styles. So these three massing diagrams here show the width of the property and our building on it. So of, of these three examples here, there's a hip roof. There's three traditional roofs, a hip roof, gable roof, and a flat roof. The only one that meets this condition and, and which would not require us to have this variance is a flat roof, which is something we do not want to do. My clients, um, came to me and said they wanted a, a modern farmhouse style home for them and their families. And so, uh, we as the architect, we went ahead and started looking into that design. Um, and there's, there's certain design elements that are particular to certain styles of homes. And, um, for a farmhouse style building, it's considered, um, that, uh, gable roof is the most iconic form that, um, replicates the feeling of the farmhouse structure. And I, I, just for purposes of me not wanting to feel that I'm being too stubborn here, I, I Google modern farmhouse buildings and there ninety-eight percent of them had gable roofs. So if you understand the, the, the their code requirement, it, it, it states that if the building is fifteen feet away from the property line, it cannot be greater than twenty-three feet. So what happens with us, is that in order to get a, a roof that has any roof appeal at all, we were, we will be non-compliant. And it's as simple as that. There's no way to make a two-story house of these type of setbacks compliant. So we think this is a unique issue, which is what the variance process is all about, is meeting out these conditions or these projects that for reasons specific to the site and to the code is, is, um, providing more, um, problems than normally would be, would occur. So. So this is a, a model of the, um, buildings. And you can see there in the three different greens, there's three building masses. And we purposely, um, separated the building into three masses so that it, it would break down visually the volume of the space and it wouldn't seem so, um, overbearing. So that's, uh, was a, that's a, um, technique we can use as designers to make a, a larger space feel, feel smaller and it'd be in more context with the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood as it exists today. So we're cognitive of the size. We know we were going to be the first two-story structure on this block or maybe in this, within this radius, four and a foot radius. So, um, we knew that this is, there was going to be the potential for people to, um, be wary of a two-story structure coming into their, into their, uh, neighborhood. But we, we use the tools that we have as designers to try to mitigate, um, the visual appearance of the, uh, house. So this diagram here kind of um, more, more, um, highlights the, um, the issues that we have here. So the sections in red are the portions of the building that are within fifteen feet of, of the, um, property line, which would require that that section of the building have a very, very low pitched roof or a flat roof. The white area here is the section of the roof same height as the sections on a, an exterior. Allow. But this, you can never build a, a house confined to this area. It's just too narrow. Basically, the requirement makes, takes more than two-thirds of the opportunity for the building height away from the owner's, um, design wishes. So what, uh, we have two options here. Option number one, we're going to zoom into is what we presented last year. And this, it shows, um, again, was what we had done, uh, in June, we had lowered the pitch. We had a higher pitched roof for the gables and we lowered it to something we thought that would still convey the sense of a farmhouse style without it being too tall or too short. Because if it's, it was too flat, it's going to look like a suburban tract home. So, uh, we did that and we thought that it was a, um, a good gesture towards, um, trying to make this house comply within this narrow lot. So, um, our option two is we, as we're studying the maxing and what we can do to kind of visually, um, reduce the appearance of the structure. It's that we, um, we broke the, the roof up into three segments. A middle section and two outer sections. The two outer sections are just dropped down eight inches. It's, it's, it seems a little, but in visual, impact will, will, will break up the masking of the roof. So we're sticking with a gable roof because again, as I mentioned, I, I Googled farmhouse, modern farmhouse buildings and they all have gable roofs. So I, for that reason, the hip roof wouldn't meet the design goals that the client had asked me to achieve. So. So essentially, we, we really go to next. This is the, the, the summer's, um, shading, shading calculations. And they, they don't change much, uh, from what we previously provided because this, the, um, is the eight inch drop from, uh, from roof, which is at thirty feet and the eight inch drop brings it down to twenty-nine, twenty-nine feet four inches. So I, at the scale, you wouldn't see any, any, um, appreciable difference in, in the solar sun studies. And this is the sun study in the winter. So as you can see, the most egregious, portion of this, and here in the winter, winter month at four PM where the, um, house is casting the largest shadow towards the north. And then when, in this winter study at twelve PM, you can see here the shadow cast at twelve PM. And then this one is nine AM. So there's, uh, shadow from the house, shade from the house at which will be over the roof of this house here on the west side. Um, this is a contextual elevation. Um, this shows the grade, the street grade change. Uh, this is the house to the east and it's roofline here. And our comparison to our building here. This is the house to the west and it's roofline and it's. So from the house to the west, we're approximately eleven feet higher in height. And then the house to the east was same, like eleven foot seven. And then, um, the reason that the house looks like is submerged is because the lot, um, changes gray from front to back. Further, you go back with a lot, the, more the gray sort of drops. So this is a kind of a montage, a photo montage of the landscaping around the building. So you can see here, this is that tree that's between the proposed structure and the existing one-story house there. This is like three-story, four-story high tree here. That's already provided in probably a lot of, of, uh, summer days like today. This is a floor plan. We got a, a young family of three children now, started out with two in this process. Now they have a third baby. So, um, it just makes more, um, site planning sense to do a two-story than to do a ranch-style house, which was sprawled all, all the way from the front to the back lot. And then there was an existing pool that was there that we had to take into consideration. So for the program of the, of the house was just asking for four bedrooms, living room, dining room, open kitchen, um, four baths. It's a pretty standard floor plan. It's nothing excessive or, or any, or out of touch with uh, normal other buildings and homes of this nature. So we feel that the, the square footage is, is, is adequate and, um, it's not, uh, overbuild of the site. Roof lines, um, this one shows our option A, which does not break the roof into three segments. And then our option B, which breaks the roof into one, two, three segments. There's the elevations. Uh, the red dash lines represents the, the previous roof pitch that we had when we first presented. And then the amount of roof pitch we reduced it by. So you can see that we did drop down the roof.
I'm sorry, your, your, your variance from a, from a roof height has gone from
Yes.
Thirty. What's your, what's your height now? With, with that change, it was.
Our roof height is thirty feet.
Okay, thirty feet, alright. So, right, and two, the code says twenty-three, right?
Correct. That's correct. Yeah.
So if, I'll make sure that we ask folks for questions, but if I may, just take just a quick minute. Um, w- w- we, I totally personally understand, um, a, a, a family coming to you and saying, this is the kind of house that I want you to design and you're the architect and so you're trying to do that. Um, I think we all understand that. You know, the, the code, county code, um, is there, to protect everybody in the whole community. Um, and, uh, we have a, a community plan here in Altadena that says that the buildings are supposed to, um, protect the air and light, um, in our community. And so, you know, the, the twenty-three feet is there for a specific reason, which is to try. in our community. And so, you know, the, the twenty-three feet is there for a specific reason, which is to try to, you know, keep things in, in, yes, you're go, you're a two-story building going into a one-story community, but overstepping the two stories by seven feet is a lot. So anyway, that, that, I, I want to make sure that we can't decide whether the code is fair or not. We can look at what you're doing and seeing, you know, how that's going to impact the neighborhood, which is what we've done. This committee, um, is looks at it from a community standpoint, not an architectural standpoint necessarily, right? Or a design standpoint, I guess I should say. Um, where this committee always looks at projects based on the impact to the, to the community and then gives that, the county looks to us to give that feedback to them. And then you will, you know, the, I think I've said this before, but the Department of Regional Planning, the, either you're going to a regional planning commission or you're going to a, a hearing officer. I don't know which one you're going to, but in any case, they will make the final decision. We will be making a decision based on how we feel and how the community feels about the project. So, um, or evaluates the project and the impact on the neighborhood. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's not that we need to separate. Gee, we'd really like to have a house that looks like this. I think that, you know, we get it and we understand and, and yes, it's just, it's unfortunate. I know it's a skinny lot. I, a lot of us in Altadena have skinny lots. So, um, in any case, I just wanted to mention that, that we'll, we're going to be looking at the project from a community impact standpoint and to see if there's, you know, what that impact's going to be, good or bad, whatever, and what the community, um, comments are. And we will just send that down to, um, you know, whatever happens here tonight, we'll just send that as input down to regional planning. So just to let you know that. Okay. So, um, are there any questions on the, uh, the presentation so far? And then I'd like to get to, um, Dorothy reading comments.
Diane, may I, may I just make a quick comment to what you just said?
Yeah, who's that? I can't see. Sorry. While he's sharing, I can't.
It's okay. It's Andrea, the owner.
Oh, hi. Okay. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, so it, what I would say to that is, uh, it's, um, when we decided we wanted a farmhouse, it, it wasn't, it wasn't one hundred percent because we just were like committed to and married to the idea of a farmhouse because we just love a farmhouse oh so much. We kind of, we selected that style house because of the community and because we thought that this is a new structure coming. So it's, it's obviously going to look different than, than the aesthetic that exists. But we thought that as a new house, it would, it, it best kind of fit the community as opposed to, what he said, the only option we have without needed a variance is a flat roof, which then creates that really modern look. And what a lot of the neighbors said that they for sure didn't want was what those like Mick, they actually used the word McMansion. And all, all those houses, the aesthetic is that super modern, super like clean lines and flat roofs. And that's partially why we selected gableing and like a farmhouse. It, it was because we like it obviously, but it was also with thinking about the neighborhood.
Right. I understand. I, I do understand. Yeah.
That's it.
I, yeah, I don't, I, I, I think that, um, like I said, we can't really, we understand the parameters under which you're building a house to, to house your family, right? That's, that's the thing you're doing basically, right? Is making a, a house that will fit your family and every, we have loads of growing families in Altadena. You know, the problem is just that in this particular property and the fact that you've chosen to go two stories, that's fine. And you know, I was the first one in my neighborhood that had a big two-story building come in behind my house and it's different. But they were within code on their height. So, um, I, I, I totally get the constrictions of the lot. I, I think we just have to go forward with what our process and what we are doing and how, how we have to make our decisions. And then you can have the conversation with regional planning. Okay, ours is just a recommendation and feedback from the community. Okay. So Dorothy.
You, you had the number of people that voted pro and, and against too, right?
At the meeting, at the last meeting? Yeah, there were twelve, twelve people that voted for denial and one that voted for recommending approval, but that was Daniel who voted no, no on recommending denial because he was hoping that he could talk to you and help you navigate through finding a way to make it less obtrusive. And that's why he voted no, or it would have been a unanimous decision.
And then the neighbors votes too?
Yeah. So Dorothy is going to, yeah, we need to keep moving because now we've done a long time on this. Uh, we need to just keep moving forward, which is that Dorothy will, um, are you there, Dorothy? I don't see.
Yes, I'm here. I, I just. Yes, I'm, I'm.
So what, what we, I need you to do your summary of how many people you talked to, what, what the feedback was. And then, um, read the, the emails, the, for public comment into the record.
Sure. Uh, there were two questions, uh, that came up. So can I ask the applicants? I'd like to just ask Greg.
Two question, two questions from your people around in the neighborhood?
That weren't, that just.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, yeah, let's just, let's just keep it.
Yes, I got you.
Okay.
Got it. Greg, um, can you explain why you guys didn't, um, look into, uh, sort of grading to kind of then reduce your, your overall height?
As I mentioned, the grades currently slopes from front to back. And that, um, you were talking about ninety, you know, that, that would be a lot of grading, excessive amount of grading, particularly how the lots run and the houses run. That would have required retaining walls and all kinds of stuff that we really don't want to go down that road.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the other, um, request that came up, which was some of the recommendations that, uh, Daniel had talked about was, um, uh, you know, sort of doing more of a, a cutting back of the roof so that it wasn't totally aligned with the edges and that, you know, you did sort of an eight-inch cut back at five feet. So there was still in your alternative, but really looking at, um, you know, going a little more robust with.
He was recommending a hip roof. We could do, it, it would, um, be less of an impact, but it was still, when it still would not meet the requirements. It would still be, um, non-compliant.
Okay. And then, okay.
But how much non-compliant?
It would be this, um, let me go back. It would be the same height, but it's just, it'll be the roof tilts back and the hip roof. What to the modeling?
Well, okay. So Dorothy, are those the questions that you had then?
Yeah, tho- those kind of came back and forth around, uh, uh, the outreach, uh, that happened. So, uh, so I can read the comments and then obviously generally speaking, uh, the, the majority of the comments were, uh, I'll give you the, uh, so it ended up being, uh, thirteen, oh, are you showing us?
Go ahead, Dorothy.
Uh, we had thirteen households, um, on the street of River Way, who were against the current design. Uh, and they felt that, uh, I'll, I'll read it, but they felt that, uh, it wasn't going to be enough of a, the eight inches wasn't enough. I'll read the comments. There were three people that did not have a problem with, um, that current design, three households. Um, and then there were four, um, that did not respond to the multiple outreaches. And then, uh, one of the properties, seventy River Way, uh, was, had two renters. Uh, but they're since gone, I think, because there's a new property owner, um, at seventy River Way, which also then will reflect with some of the comments. Um, outreach went.
And Dorothy, in that summary, did you say how many people you had that spoke against the project or did I miss it? Was I not listening?
Thirteen.
Oh, thirteen against. Okay, thirteen against.
Three, four, three were in favor.
Okay.
Four, no, for no response.
Okay.
And two renters who no longer are there because
Right.
Indy River Way was sold.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Uh, so from that, um, I'll read, um, the, uh, the different comments. So this is.
Right. This is, everybody, we're, we're looking at this. We don't have public comment here, um, on Zoom. So this is public comment. Go ahead.
Yeah. So.
Read fast because you only have two minutes a person.
Yes.
Okay.
This is ninety-three River Way, Doug Thomas. Uh, and Doug says, uh, my husband and I have lived at ninety-three River Way. I'm writing to express our opposition to the proposed construction project across the street from us at one hundred River Way. My objection is primarily due to the anticipated increase in the number of residents that the plan indicates. Uh, River Way is a small cul-de-sac already lined with cars parked on both sides. Children are able to play here and pedestrians enjoy walking down the street as well. Increased traffic on the street and an increase in the number of parked vehicles is going to pose hazards to all the residents on River Way. In addition, consideration should be given to evacuation concerns in the event of a major emergency such as a fire. We've already had two occasions and the street under evacuation warning due to nearby fires. Increasing the number of residents and vehicles on the street will add to the dangers of evacuation delays.
Okay. In the, in the interest of clarity, I, I don't think that we're increasing the number of people that are living there, are we?
On the street, there's more.
Oh, is it the A D U? Is it, is it the A D U that's going to put more people into the house? I mean, don't the people, the number of people that live there, the number of people that live there, right?
Yeah, they're not specified in their comments.
Pardon me?
It wasn't specified in the comments, but.
No, I'm asking Andrea, the, the, the number of people that live in your house today are the number of people that will live in your house tomorrow? Or are you going to rent out part of it?
No, we're not renting any part of it. And the street parking, it was mentioned a lot by neighbors, but we're having a two-car in the driveway. So.
Right, okay. Well, I just want to make sure that we understand what the, um, what the neighbors are complaining about. So in this case, I think there was a misunderstanding, it sounds like. Okay, go ahead, Dorothy.
There was just, uh, I think, uh, the comment from that is that the residents, uh, said that people don't park all their cars in the driveway in general.
Well, that we can't.
They were, they, they understood that there is a two-car garage, uh, that has four potential parking spots.
Yeah, this is, this is an, just guys, this is an expansion of an already existing family that lives there. So we can't really take into consideration that they're worried about people parking on the street.
Currently doesn't even have a garage. So we're actually creating.
Okay. Thank, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Dorothy.
Okay, one thirteen River Way, um, Liz Espinoza, um, I appreciate that the owners want to build their dream house, but I believe they really don't understand the climate of this street. Uh, I find it to be inconsiderate, uh, to the two adjacent neighbors who clearly stated their opposition to the construction, even with the new proposal. Their reasons are solid. There is a code to follow in Altadena. It's for this reason, my feeling is it must stay within the code. I do not agree with the new proposal. Uh, part two, I realize, uh, let's see, I believe it's very relevant. This is still one thirteen. I believe it's very relevant. Um, and while this is a perfectly good structure to, is being demolished, another structure will be put in its place. The community on River Way will have to endure the impact of noise, large trucks, the sounds of construction for two or three years. Where will the owners be at that time? They'll be comfortably living in their current home, not dealing with the impacts of the construction and the residents on River Way will have to endure it, not them. The next.
And I think I said to all of you that, um, any complaint, the, I am, the code piece of that comment is absolutely valid. The piece that they're complaining about, um, noise and dust and all of that. We can, if we were to recommend approval of the project with conditions, we could, just to show that it's important to the community, there are rules already that have to be followed for construction hours to keep, you know, within certain hours to keep noises down and certain days and, and keeping debris level down and all of that. That's all handled by building and safety code enforcement. So not part of the building. Anyway, go ahead. But the, the part that they put in there about the, keeping to the code is, is, you know, what we're looking at. Go ahead, Dorothy, next.
And just to that point, um, the homeowners, um, are concerned about the impact from the demolition, uh, the, the two neighboring. So I guess that's part of the code, just in case.
Yeah.
During that. Okay, uh, seventy-five, uh, River Way, Ryan Swerdloth. Initially, when we spoke, I was non-committal, uh, and didn't have any objection to the height variance request proposed structure to be built at one hundred River Way. However, a majority of the neighbors were against granting an exception to the variance if the property could not meet the twenty-three-foot height restrictions. With the submission of the current plans by the landowners, it appears that they have not made a significant change that would comply with the height variance, which leads me to join my neighbors to object to the latest proposal. Both, um, adjacent neighbors, east and west of the property would be negatively, negatively impacted. And the structure itself would be a big departure from the decor and aesthetic of the existing dwelling, dwellings, which has led my change of heart to now, um, uh, object to the project design. A bigger concern for myself and many of the neighbors is the variance, if, if the variance is approved, it would set a precedent that would allow other new construction to also uh, feel entitled to variances in building codes, making the policies unenforceable and negatively impacting this street and the surrounding neighborhoods. None of us wish to cause problems for our new neighbors. We simply hope they can design a home that fits within the guidelines set by L.A. County and the Planning Commission.
Okay, next.
Okay, uh, one ten River Way, that is the west neighbor. Uh, this is Grace Matlock. I want to share that this project negatively affects my property. Uh, I vote no for this meeting. Grace said, I spoke to Amari regarding the property line, um, and the property does not have, uh, I'm sorry, the one ten River Way property does not have any of the one hundred River Way uh, property. So they were concerned about the property line. There is no permission given for anyone to go on the property at one ten River Way for any reason. It is my request that I be kept informed of any information regarding the property. I object to the one hundred River Way project. It negatively impacts my property. Uh, Grace Coleman Matlock.
Okay, next.
Okay, this is the Glen Rose property. I'm sorry, I don't have the number, but it's Glen Rose on the south corner of, uh, River Way. Um, I'm writing.
Say something, I'm sorry. But in this time, if they're all negative, do we have to hear everyone? Is that because?
People, if we had people in the room, we would let them get up to the podium and speak. Right?
I don't, I think if you're all saying no.
If we were taking public comment, we would let everybody speak. If we were in the community center. Right? That's what this is, public comment. I don't know unless Billy has a different idea, but. Sandra.
No, I think when, when she started, they said that this was in lieu of public comment. This, so this is actually the public comment. And, uh, at the meetings, if they have filled out the, the, the sheet, then they have to, they, they are allowed to speak.
Right.
Okay, but didn't we have, and I don't want to.
I do. Okay, go ahead, Dorothy.
I mean, there might be some.
Go ahead, Dorothy.
To consider. Okay, so this is, I'm writing to register my protest against an extreme variance offered to the new construction on River Way. In inspecting the plans across the three iterations, I find that there have been very few concessions. I'm sorry, hello?
Greg, can you, can you go on mute, please, Gregory?
I find that there have been very few concessions to the norms in the neighborhood. Additionally, it is my understanding that the attempts on my neighbor's part to reach out, living at One Hundred River Way have been rebuffed, rebuffed. I love my neighborhood so very much. I love the modesty, its simple elegance. I love the way each rely on each other. The new construction and the manner in which these neighbors have gone about trying to change our neighborhood does not accord to how we feel. Additionally, I'm concerned that how the variances are requested will lay the groundwork for other variances moving forward. I really realize the neighborhood change, but we have a proud history in Altadena that is under threat by developers and by people who buy here who don't see how truly amazing the neighborhood is. People should change their houses as their families grow and evolve. Of course, of course, but not, I'm sorry, but is, but not in such an extreme way and not in such a way as to create discord in a tight-knit and interdependent community. Please vote against the variance. I see no goodwill, no willingness to be reasonable on the part of the owners at One Hundred River Way. This is Fifty-eight River Way. Stephanie Pinto, thank you for having the hearing. Thank you again for hearing the opinions of the residences on River Way. There has been no outreach from the homeowners since the last meeting, and we were surprised to see it back on the agenda. Unfortunately, we also see the architect did little to compromise with the design revisions. Maybe they're waiting for us to get tired of the process. We are still concerned with the scale of the proposed house at One Hundred River Way. The project structure would still impact three to four homes, so we are voicing our concern again. The impact is big. This will be the tallest structure on the block and aesthetically stark contrast from the other homes. Besides being out of place, we believe it decreases the value of its neighboring properties, who happen to be some of the longest residents on River Way. We also fear this will set precedence for other properties on our street as well as on Glen Rose. We are a community that still stands, the community that's done, still stands arm-in-arm to ask that exceptions not be made to accommodate developers who see only the land they build on and not the people who surround it. One fourteen River Way. We have not yet heard a compelling reason for the variance to be approved. We urge the town council to vote against the variance. Approval of the variance requested would have an increasingly detrimental impact on our growing neighborhood. There are currently two large properties on our next, next to our street that were recently purchased. Each of those lots have multiple houses on the property. While we do not yet know what the plans are for these large lots, the worst-case scenario in each of those lots gets new homes that follow the standards set by One Hundred River Way. Part of the process to allow for the variance includes finding pre-existing homes that have a comparable build-out to the variances being requested, which means allowing this variance will set the standard of our growing community. None of this is personal to the people who will someday share their lives with all of us on our little street. This is about avoiding a thirty-foot wall five feet from a property line and avoiding a thirty-foot wall five feet away from any property line in the future. These community standards were put in place to avoid Altadena from being overbuilt the way so many of our neighboring communities already have been. To think this variance could be an open door to move more homes being granted something similar would in fact detract from the original intent of these ordinances. We are all grateful to the council for continuing to support our best interests as a community. Please consider the repercussions if the variance is allowed. Any of us, all of us, all any of us have asked is that the owners follow the community standard as it is written, so we can maintain the existing aesthetic of our neighborhood. One fourteen River Way, JJ and Michael Break. This is One Twenty-three River Way, Jeff Lentz. I'm writing in protest at the proposal variance for the construction at One Hundred River Way. As stated in letters during the prior two council meetings, we are a diverse and welcoming community. That's one thing, that's one of the things my wife and I love about most on River Way. I'm disappointed that the new owners of the land feel excluded, as I know this is not the intention of our community. In fact, I know, I understand that the invitations were not accepted. Still, I would welcome the chance to get to know them and hope that they can find a way to be part of our community if they choose to move to our street. I do not see significant changes to the requested variances in the plan submitted for today's meeting. In fact, the proposed plan looks as though they would have the same negative impact on our community the plan submitted for the last two meetings. This alone is enough for me to write in protest and request the variance be declined again. In researching reasons why dimensional variances should be allowed, the following questions are cited as guidelines. One, does strict compliance with the ordinance totally prevent improvement of the property in a manner that is reasonable, customary, and consistent with other properties in the area? Two, does strict compliance with the ordinance cause practical difficulty due to significant or unjustified expense in the light of the scope of the project, destruction or demolition of attractive features of the property or similar reasons? The answer to both of these questions is clearly no. Complying with the ordinance does not prevent improvement of the property in a manner which is reasonable, customary, and consistent with other properties in the area. Compliance with the ordinance also does not cause significant or unjustified expense. This leads me to request the variance be declined. It has also been explained to me that it is up to the applicant to justify the variance. All, at the.
Two minutes, Doc.
Okay. At the time of this letter, I have heard no valid explanation that justifies allowing the variance and the impact would have in our community, maintaining the character, character and quality of our small area of Altadena is not an unreasonable.
Ding, 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 ding.
That's it, Doc. It's that.
Okay. Yes, Sixty-five River Way. I live at Sixty-five River Way. I am opposed to giving a variance to One Hundred River Way and ask the town council vote against the variance. We have not yet been given an adequate reason for a variance that will dramatically change our street and neighborhood. Roxanne Armstrong, Sixty-five River Way, Caesar Plaza. My name is Caesar Plaza. I live at Sixty-five River Way. I write to you again to express my concerns of the variances that are requested for the One Hundred River Way property. I oppose to the variances that they are requesting. My reason is, it will affect the immediate neighbors' properties. That this will affect them in different ways, to name a couple, in the sun, in the heat, in the sunlight. This structure will cause changes in how our neighborhood lives and will be affected by the shade and not, and not in different seasons that will alter their present way of living. Also, patterns of the wind currents that can also carry too much cold and heat. Same if it were too close to the property line, where, where a bigger structure, walls will heat up and will heat, the heat will travel to the immediate houses next to it. Also visibly for other neighbors. It is very concerning. The issues need to be addressed in the minds that will affect the people's lives. The only reason should be sufficient to reject acting variances and no mentioning that will have a large population of wildlife that use trees, vegetation, and brushes to live and survive. Kindly and respectfully request to not allow the variance to take place. Note, I feel bad for the new owners, but it is where them being affected in the same way that their present neighbors are, will be. I, I, I do not feel the same for them. Okay, two more. One Thirty-two River Way. As a resident of, this is Rona Ballister. As a resident of Altadena for the past thirty-four years, at the same address on River Way, I have enjoyed my slowly evolving and improving neighborhood. I welcome positive change, as do many of my neighbors. However, the proposed development at One Hundred River Way seems to be an intrusion and a non-conforming proposition that would adversely affect our community. This is evidenced by the fact that it requires exceptions to the building codes. Of course, there are times when exceptions may be granted for practical reasons if there are no negative results or impacts to the welfare of the community. But in this case, we are, but in, but is this the case we are currently facing? No, by allowing the structures, by allowing a structure that is too tall for its space and setbacks that are too shallow, the nearby residents are impacted in a negative way and the overall look of the neighborhood is irreversibly altered. We do not want our street to be filled up in a non-conforming way. And why should it be? What is the compelling reason for this request to be allowed to go against the building code? Aren't the codes designed to protect neighborhoods from overreaching and over-imposing intrusions? Of course, they are there for everyone's protection and to preserve the quality of our neighborhood. If this code is weakened and the variance is allowed to be granted, it will be easier for future variances to be granted as well. And pretty soon, our neighborhood quality will be forever lost. This is a very serious issue and concern for everyone on this street and the surrounding streets as well. A dangerous precedent will be set and a corruptive example will be installed in our midst. I see no reason why the town council would approve this sort of development. And the last one is Eighty-eight River Way, which is Gene Mackey, the East Neighbor. There are so many concerns about the variances and house placement. Our little street is lined with older homes. This project at One Hundred River Way imposes a sore thumb to our street environment. It does not fix the size or ambience of a single-story structure and overwhelms its own land as well the homes sitting next to it. Our street is heavily walked by surrounding neighbors, bringing their children to see the wild peacocks. It is a safe street for our children in the surrounding neighborhood to ride their bikes. We have a good life and we do share how special it is to have a place like River Way. I just oppose the large intrusion of the property. The owners have an opportunity to live in a great place by constructing a home that holds to the standards of being beautiful and not offensive use of the land or an invasion of the privacy to other neighbors, to the other neighbors' privacy. It just doesn't fit, no matter how you turn it sideways, upside down, to the other homes, even to the land itself. Thank you, Gene Mackey. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there any, are there any other questions before we move to a motion? Okay. Hannah, who has the, you do?
I got it, ready? Okay, oh, yes, Dorothy, you're muted.
You're muted.
One last question for Greg or Andrea. Is the, is it a total home demolition? Or are you leaving a wall up at all, like the fireplace side? Or is that all being demolished? And then you'll have the five-foot setback? That's the east side wall?
We have, yeah, we will comply with five, three yards.
Right, so that everything will be demolished, including fireplace?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Okay. In the application of PRJ twenty twenty zero zero one four four five five at One Hundred River Way, MCUP, to authorize a building maximum height of thirty feet instead of the required twenty-three feet, changing the CSD and the height above twenty-three feet within fifteen feet of any property line requirements per section twenty-two point three oh six point zero seven oh A one C, that based on community feedback and the proposed height being out of character with the neighborhood, I move that the Altadena Town Council recommends to the Department of Regional Planning that the project be denied.
Second.
Okay, Daryl, you have a second? So Billy, you want to take a vote? You're muted. You're muted. You're muted, Billy.
Sorry, all those in favor as red, say aye.
Put your hands up and keep them up, everybody. One, two, three.
All those opposed, say nay.
Wait, she's counting.
Never mind, if nobody says nay, go ahead.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So moved unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Dorothy and Hannah, let's get together about the letter, okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item seven, general public comments. And I will hand it over to Councilmember Wong if we have any public comments.
Sorry. Let's see, so, public comments, Dear Altadena Town Council, this is, you are quarterly, cordially invited to My Tribe Rise Brothers Connecting Brothers. Peace in the Park Breakfast Walk and Roll Saturday, August twenty-first, eight AM to twelve thirty PM at Charles White Park. Together, let's activate Charles White Peace Park. Positive energy activates constant elevation. This event will include Dena United Peace Walk and Roll, yoga, guided meditation, kids pop-up bike skills course, intergenerational arts and crafts, kids community PlayStation, mental well-being, activities, inclusion, ecology trail, positive community networking, DJ performances, dancing, giveaways, did I say free gourmet breakfast, raffles a few, and lots of fun. We will, lots of fun. We will have empowering dialogue regarding public safety, mobility justice, mental health, strengthening, and social justice. We must connect to engage in productive, positive dialogue to vision our community's safe, healthy, and equitable living for all of us. We're excited to partner with First to Third, Altadena Bicycle Club, Manhood Reach Out, Side Street Project, Showing Up for Racial Justice in Altadena, Soul Force Project, Los Angeles County Supervisor Catherine Barker's office, Los Angeles County Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works, and California Highway Patrol. All vendors are welcome, and volunteers. Let's infuse the park with community outreach and resources. If you or one of your community partners would like to set up a booth, please find information on our website at mytriberise.org. Together we rise, peace and blessings. Heavenly Hughes, founder and executive director. That's the only public comment I receive.
I have a question.
Yes.
What did you say the date of this event was?
Thank you. It's Saturday, this Saturday. Eight twenty-one.
This Saturday, okay, I thought I'd heard August first.
Yeah, I might have said that. I've been reading a lot.
I understand.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's Saturday.
This Saturday.
Yes, eight, eight, eight AM will be coffee and a little sort of socializing. Eight-thirty will be a free community breakfast.
That's time, Dorothy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, item eight, Census Track Reports, forty-six ten. I'm not sure who's reading for forty-six ten, but.
I am. Evening, everybody. Well, we do have an exciting meeting that's coming up on this Saturday. I do not have my flyer exactly close at hand, but we will be having a meeting at the, at the site at Windsor and Arroyo. Just to the north of Gordy's Garage, they are proposing a new building there. And the owner would like to meet with the community and see any suggestions and before he moves forward with the project. There will also be, the library will be participating. There will also be a map, my neighborhood, participating there. And there will also be an update from the Devil's Gate project of what's going on. And the, the, the Altadena Heritage and City of Hope and a few others with information about the community will be going on. It starts at ten AM. Unfortunately, I will be unable to participate at the meeting. I will be working Saturday morning. But thankfully, Veronica Jones will be there and taking care of a lot of the situations, what's going on. So please come to this meeting and really give us some positive feedback on what can, what we can do and how they can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Census Track Report, forty-six oh three point oh one, which I believe is Councilmember Wong.
Hi, yes, thank you. I think we've covered most of the information that relates to our census tract. I did want to invite the council members, if anyone would like to join in the Bite Back Altadena. That, that's on the twenty-sixth. Let me know. And then I wanted to just share with. And then I wanted to just share with our census tract and any other census tract related to fire hazards that Supervisor Barker, the Board of Supervisors, motioned reducing the risk of fires associated with homeless encampments in high fire hazard severity zones. So wildfires are a frequent natural disaster in California, causing significant harm and lost to individuals, communities, wildlife, and great swaths of natural landscape. And the frequency, duration, and size of wildfires have increased over the last several decades. Researchers at UCI Irvine reported that the state's burn season has grown longer and longer over the last twenty years, now beginning in May rather than June, with the peak shifting from August to July. LA County unusual extreme heat coupled with bone-dry terrain has created ideal conditions for more rapid spread when fire occurs. While most California, I'm almost done, while most California is subject to some degree of fire risk, specific features make some areas particularly hazardous. State law requires the California Department of Forestry, Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, to identify areas based on severity of fire hazard that is expected to prevail there. These areas or zones are based on factors such as fuel slope fire. There are three zones based on increased fire hazard, medium, high, and very high. And we're actually in extreme. As we go through twenty twenty-one fire season, what's, we must be diligent in fire risk, particularly in the highest hazard zones. So ultimately, I'll, I'll share the motion with you guys and our census tract, but is really reducing the risk of fires associated with homeless encampments in high fire hazard zones. So I thought that would be of interest for our community. Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? All right, we have lots of seconds and thirds and fourths. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. No abstentions.
Bye, guys.
It's been a long meeting.
Can I just say before I really, I really, really appreciate the thoughtfulness and just the due diligence that we do on these projects for land use. It, it's just important that we go through the process and and are very clear that we've really thought it through. So thanks very much. And Sandra, thanks for the backup on that.
Yeah, well, Diane, I have a question for you, but I'll call you.
All right, yeah, call me, I'm here.